Evening, everyone, and welcome to the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors. I would ask that the meeting begin and that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We just flag the United States of America, the public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, with that Supervisor Lewis, are you here?
Present.
Supervisor McCartney?
Present.
Supervisor Gagnier?
Here.
Thank you, I'm here, we have a full house, I'm gonna go through the community announcements. Just a reminder that anyone who has a announcement that they want to make, youth organizations or community activities that are going on, this is your time to do it. You can send in an email or you can call in at this time. This Friday, as many of you know, we're having a blood drive from one to six. This is the second blood drive of this year for the township, hopefully we'll be able to have one more, I hope to see you all there. Community Day is August twenty-sixth. There's an opportunity for volunteers, if anybody has time to participate, you can reach out to Park and Recs. For more information, you can go to lmt.org-special-events. And then the Ad Hoc Property Committee continues to meet to create a long-term master plan for Patterson Farm and continues to ask for community involvement. As many of you know, it's a township-owned property at a crossroads with historic buildings that require extensive repair or they may be lost. The committee is working with a team of architects, engineers and economists to determine the best way and compatible uses for these buildings. And we can benefit from the, to be a benefit to the community and support the maintenance for future generations. The public is asked to become involved by either attending the Zoom meetings that are every second Thursday of each month. Or going to our website, lmt.org/community/battersonfarm, because there's a lot of information on there. Any other community announcements? Anybody on the line?
There's no one online at this time.
Okay, then with that, we're up to agenda item number five. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Supervisor Dr. Frederick Weiss?
So moved, second.
Thank you, any comment from the board? Then I would just wish Dr. Weiss and his lovely wife Cindy best of luck in their new home, thank them for all that they've done over the years and look forward to seeing you again, I hope. Any public comment on the line? No public comment on the line?
No public comment at this time.
Thank you, all right, agenda number seven, oh sorry, sorry, hate to vote on that, it's been a while. All those in favor of accepting the resignation, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that, I would like to pivot for a second and to bring a public comment up to the front of the agenda, to the extent that we have residents from Maple Vale here who would like to be heard. So traditional public comment remains at the back of the agenda, but if there's anyone from Maple Vale or anybody impacted by the floodings who would like to speak, please come to the podium.
Hello, everybody, my name is April Willways-Clover, I'm a resident of Lower Makefield Township at twenty Maple Vale Drive. I was hoping that we would get an update on, I understand that we're still waiting for Pima and FEMA, that have been questions we had in the past, but I'm wondering for an update on the situation with the pipe replacement. And I understand there's a proposal for two pipes to be put in and there's challenges from the DCNR, I just wonder if we can get an update on that.
Sure.
I'm gonna sit down, but then I'll probably come back after, that's okay?
Whatever, make it comfortable, yep.
Paul, I don't, I don't know, if you want to provide an update Derek, or I'd be happy to, whatever's.
Absolutely, so for the replacement, we've spoken to DEP and DCNR. They have confirmed that we cannot install the additional pipe, we are going to replace the one pipe. And our current permit, we will resubmit for the application and they will issue a new permit. We are in the process of revising the plans and resubmitting and we will have that very soon. We just had the conversation with DCNR and DEP yesterday. And we will be resubmitting soon and get a new, hopefully, permit approved shortly.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yeah, so we, we submitted a permit application for two pipes to the DEP, an emergency permit application. They approved it, DEP did, because they're the ones that approved the permit to actually construct something. DCNR is the property owner, came back after the, after the permit was approved and said they would not allow for a second pipe to be included in, in the package, right? And, and let me add this thought to it, in the, because of the, and Derek, you can confirm this too. Through that process, as we designed for the second pipe, got the permit for the second pipe, we procured all materials, labor, et cetera, got it on schedule to do it. And basically at this meeting yesterday?
It was a phone call.
Well, yeah, it's teams, yes. Teams meeting yesterday with DCNR, they, they said that we could not put in the second pipe.
Correct.
Correct. So in terms of, you talk about a new permit, right? We have an existing permit, does, do we have to, to get, basically, there's been work done, it's not finished, even with the single pipe, it's not finished yet. To finish that piece of it, as we deal with DCNR, do we need to wait for a new permit, a new permit application to be approved?
No, they verbally, they verbally conveyed that we can proceed with the emergency repairs under the emergency permit with the single pipe installation. So Derek has an update, you can provide an update just in terms of scheduling on that.
We found that out yesterday, obviously, I conveyed that to the contractor yesterday around three thirty, that, look, we can't do the second pipe, we can move forward the first. So he's trying to get back on site Friday, he just reallocated his force, because he wasn't working Wednesday, Tuesday they weren't there, Wednesday, so I'm trying to get him back Friday, guaranteed he will be there Monday. To start with a single pipe installation per DCNR's requirement.
Armaments on the bank.
Armament of the embankment, covering the armament of the embankment, DCNR is fine with all that, you know, seeding the embankment when we're done, but only one pipe can go in.
Alright, so I'm gonna over, probably overly simplify this, but my understanding is that DCNR's argument was that they're concerned about the canal being used for stormwater management, generally.
Correct, I mean, so.
Stormwater management.
So, sure. Bring this a little closer, so my, I'll repeat what I just said for you, man. My understanding is that DCNR has said no to the second pipe because they are concerned about the use of the canal for purposes of stormwater management. Now, stormwater management is rainfall that runs off of, off the ground, simple. The canal is at the low point in the watershed next to the river, that's how they built the thing years and years ago. So it's by default used for stormwater management, right? So I, I don't, and, and if, if I heard correctly before. If I understood that, that some of their argument was that they wanted us to do some detailed analysis across multi municipalities, watersheds outside of Maple Vale, down into Morrisville and other places, just so we could put in a second pipe, is that correct?
Right, that's my understanding, yes.
That's correct, they were, I think their biggest concern was that having the additional pipe would lead to an increase in pipe flow to the canal. Our argument was it's gonna back up, it's gonna be curved for momentarily, and then you'll have overland flow to the canal. And the flow will basically be similar, but the additional pipe going directly to the canal, they wanted an extensive analysis to see, as you mentioned, downstream. What impacts that would have, and we advised that that would be a comprehensive study and would take time.
There, I'll, I'll be blunt, their, their arguments don't make a heck of a lot of sense to me from a, from a practical perspective and how water flows downhill. It, it'll just, someone who studies stormwater just doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense, and we have engineers in the room that could wax poetic about that. If, I'd, I'd like to see if the board could write some sort of letter to DCNR, strongly pushing, you know, we've, we've gone the route where we've gone the traditional, you know, we need a permit. So we applied for a permit, so we can do the work, we bought everything, we're gonna do it, then they say no. I don't think, that's not a good answer to me, I think the board, if we, if everyone's in agreement, should probably write a letter and contact DCNR and other high-level officials in the state, pleading our case as a township. I think there's, oh, would that be a motion I should make?
I think we need a motion.
Okay.
Is that appropriate?
I think technically, yeah, it's fine, I think what I would suggest is we do it to add it to the agenda and then, and then vote on, once that's approved, then you vote on that motion. So would it be the motion to put on the agenda, be a motion to contact DCNR and other state officials to reconsider their denial of the second pipe as, as you've described?
So moved, so moved.
Second.
That's to place that item on.
On, on the agenda, yeah.
Okay.
So to place it on the agenda, motion made by Supervisor Gagnier, seconded by Mr. McCartney, Supervisor McCartney, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is made, added to the agenda.
Here we go, so my next motion will be to have the Board of Supervisors write a letter to DCNR and other state officials to reconsider the approval of a second pipe related to the Maple Vale restoration.
Second.
Did you beep me?
Okay, so we have a motion made by Dan, seconded by Supervisor Lewis, any comment?
I have a quick comment and a question, actually, so when was the first pipe installed, does anybody know what that is?
The, the pipe that is not broken, which is on the other, between fourteen, between sixteen and eighteen, I'm sorry, was the original with the neighborhood nineteen fifty-five-ish. The secondary one was installed at some point around nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, would be my best guess, knowing from when the easements were obtained from the property owners of eighteen and twenty Maple Vale.
So what you're saying is if you change the scope of work from two pipes to one, which is existing, just replacing the existing pipe, that still requires a permit?
We, we are covered under the emergency permit to replace a pipe that was destroyed in a storm, the emergency permit would cover that. However, part of the emergency permit is to then go back within sixty days and get your necessary general permits, whether, I believe, a GP six or eight, whatever, just to follow up with the proper paperwork.
So the emergency permit allows you to start work immediately?
That's correct, yeah, and follow up with the necessary proper paperwork to follow.
We can start replacing that pipe?
We can replace the single pipe immediately, yes, that is correct, yeah.
Which is how we got the materials without having to go through the bid process.
Yeah, I understand.
We bought them in that time.
And, and the permit we actually got was to have two pipes, the DEP approved two pipes, and they're, they are the stormwater engineers in the state, so that's why it's incredibly frustrating to.
So when are we gonna start replacing that pipe then?
I have crews, definitely Monday, they're trying to get back on site Friday, because they obviously left to go somewhere else, because they had no other work waiting for the permit from, approval from DCNR.
Okay.
DCNR didn't need to permit us, they needed to approve us a discharge on their site, and they said you could do one pipe only.
Cool, that's it.
So I was gonna say, along those lines, make sure that we send the same letter to the Secretary of DEP, the regional folks in Norristown, as well as our elected state folks, center and rep as well. Because this is sort of unexpected and not what we're looking for here in terms of being fast, yeah.
Yeah, and I would hope that we could, you know, get that out this week, I know Dan has graciously offered to help author that with, along with our township staff and engineers. I, you know, just do want to be clear, it's, you know, as you all know, one at a time, sir, thank you. As you all know, we have been working and this is unexpected, we, you know, but it's, I don't want anyone who's listening to think, oh, now they're gonna contact, right? We've been in working with them since the time we did not expect this response, now we're gonna try to ratchet up the pressure even more than we have been doing.
To your point about ratcheting up pressure, obviously a letter from the, an official letter from the board is helpful. I'll say from personal experience and other issues, it also helps if residents send a petition, a letter, letters to the same folks. You all have great skills in different, in different things, where you can develop letters, you might have media contacts, et cetera, where we can, we can use, you know, sort of a multi-pronged approach to try and get this through. I'm happy to work through our township manager to make sure that we have, anyone that wants to do that, that we get you the right names and contact information. And if we can, I'm happy to even try to assist, if you'd like, if you don't, if you want to do your own thing, that's cool too, but.
You know, we could take a little verbiage from you though, Dan, I want to use the right.
Likewise.
Yes.
It goes both ways, so I think it's important, short version is I think it's important that the board does something officially, but I think when it comes to getting stuff done, it, it's sometimes even better if there's members of, of the public who are directly affected. Have photos and have their own stories that has, often more impactful to folks in that, in those seats, so.
Related to that, is it possible to?
We have a motion, so if you have commentary related to the motion, then you can, right, so thank you, anybody else have any motion commentary? Any comments on the line?
There's no comment at this time.
I'm sorry, sir, you would like to make a motion, you would like to make a comment on this motion? Okay, so I know I can hear you, but we've. Okay, so I know I can hear you, but we've had a lot of comments that when people from the audience speak, no one else can hear you, so would you mind please sitting down so that we can have public comment on the motion? Thank you. Could you please come up and, and ask your questions?
Started off saying DP.
Name, and that you're a resident of Lower Makefield? Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Road Yardley. Started off up there saying DP and DCNR. A little bit later, we changed it to DEP. I wish you'd stop using acronyms and say the entire word, so we know what you're talking about. Now, is DP and DEP, are they the same thing?
Yes, it was intended to be DEP, yes, so that's the Department of Environmental Protection.
Wait a minute, any more public comment on the motion?
I think, I think she actually did.
You have public comment on the motion? Okay.
All right, now, it is related to the pipe replacement, if that's, this, okay, cool. Derek, what is, so you guys are gonna replace the pipe?
We are, we are.
What does that mean, like, you're digging out the old pipe?
We're digging up the old pipe.
Order of operation, what's happening?
Yep, so next, next step, the contract, again, I, I guarantee he'll be there Monday, I'm trying for Friday, just manpower wise. But his next step is, is to start, he did everything out, he rearmored the existing nineteen fifty-five pipe that was done. He started cleaning up the rest of the canal near the fishing dock that's out there, and then his, his next steps are start building up for the pipe bottom elevation, so there's a little bit more fill to go in, and then he's actually gonna start laying the pipe from the canal out to the street, correct? And what he's going to do is lay it in a fashion that if and when a second pipe, if possibly could ever be installed, it will fit within the easement. So, so his next step is to start laying and removing that existing pipe working from the canal all the way back out to the street.
Thank you, and are you putting back the old pipe or a new pipe?
New pipe, it's brand new HCP pipe that, like, to, to Supervisor Grignere's point, like, we procured enough for both runs, so it's sitting in our yard ready to go.
Thank you, um, so.
Any more public comment on sending a letter?
Oh, this is kind of, I was getting to that, sorry, I, okay.
Uh, with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor of sending the letter, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes four zero.
Sorry, went out of order in my notes, um, so with regards to DCNR, is it, I know that when they came to the homes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Adams, DCNR is the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, they own the canal, they don't issue permits, but they own the canal. Yes, yeah, the, to, Mr. Adams asked that they can deny or work with us on a second pipe and other treatments along the canal. But DEP, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP actually issues permits, sorry.
Um, with regards to DCNR, and when DEP came out with DCNR, is it possible to find out who came to our homes and stood in that ditch and said, no, it's okay, you guys don't need a second pipe, can we, is there a possibility to find out exactly who came? Who's exactly made this decision, I know we can send letters to the contacts you give us, but I would really like to speak to the person who thought that we're good.
So we have meeting minutes from the day of the site visit to see who was there. And I don't know if that's.
Could do a write to no request for a meeting, can you?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Adams, help me with the write to no request, all right, got you, okay, thank you.
Do you wanna, I don't.
If we, that was, uh, the nineteenth, I believe.
Yeah, we could, I, I don't mind just giving it to him, I'll email it to him.
I'll make sure we have the right day of next July.
Well, there's, and there's been more than one meeting, so.
Yeah, April's referring to when there was a physical site visit, again, mo- most, most of the meetings thus far that post that have been remote, um, so, so this is, this is the date in which, uh, there was the physical site, site visit, we're, we're aware of that, that meeting, yep.
If you gave me your email address, which is, mine is J L E W I S at L M T dot O R G, I could send you the contact information of the person you'd wanna talk to.
Thank you, and any additional contact information you can provide for our letter and email writing campaign, we're happy to take on, and we want to support the township in getting that second pipe. Last, my last point just related to the, the drain repl- the pipe replacement, so I was looking into some documentation DCNR put out in two thousand and eighteen, and, well, their dated, the documents are dated twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one. Um, they're sentimental to us because we almost flooded in twenty eighteen, and I'd shared with Dan the video of their entire family and my husband out in the street pulling, cleaning the drains out, some of the people who drove by that day from the township might remember us, and there's rumors of us having pitchforks out there, but they were just rakes. In twenty twenty-one, when the study came out or their findings came out, that's the year we flooded last. And in reading through the documentation, not that I fully understand it, but there's a list of participating townships and a list of participating areas, and LMT did not respond to their request. So there's asterisks on all the townspeople who have, and there's this gaping hole of issues and identified risks in their entire map from Easton to Bristol with no indication of LMT participating, now I realize most of you weren't on the board now, these are different people, but does that give DCNR more of a leg to stand on to say no because the township didn't participate and the township's not making this request? Is that why they want you guys to pay for this big water study, because we, we got skipped over and now they're trying to retrofit us onto just the downstream and not all the way up to Easton? And I know you might know the answer, but I'm just, as I was reading through, just questions started popping up in that, in that regard.
I've read the studies as well, there, there, so the first one was the Delaware Canal preliminary stormwater study done by Heritage Conservancy, uh, that was published in eighteen, I think that's the one that was eighteen, uh, in seventeen, they reached, according to their, the study, they reached out to all the towns along the canal, all sixty miles, and I think, I don't remember the number, but seven or eight of them responded and the rest of them didn't. And i- the question was, where are their trouble spots essentially along the canal, where do you have stormwater issues? Lower Makefields did not resp- didn't respond, I don't know who, who got it, who was, that wasn't on the board at that time, so I, I don't really know the history. But I, I did read the report, and it talked about how the canal could be used for, it had enough freeboard, which is essentially another word of saying space, to do stormwater management, so their response to not doing a pipe because of stormwater.
It's very conflicting with the fact that they, that it's not made for stormwater, but there's an entire section about that.
Yeah, and then the other report that was published, I think this year, talks about setting up a regional multi municipal stormwater authority to manage the canal where they charge a fee to towns along the canal for using it for stormwater management, so that hasn't been implemented, but there were two related or adjacent reports to what we're talking about, and, but they didn't propose any projects to improve stormwater management in Lower Makefield. They did propose a handful or dozen, up to a dozen maybe, across different towns north and south of us, so interesting reports, I can send them around, because I found two. Didn't make a whole lot of, that's part of the reason I'm additionally frustrated with, uh, wanting to write this letter, after reading those reports.
Okay, so, so I don't know the answer, what you're, I'm just giving, you know, some context for what you're talking about, but I don't know the answer to your question, I wish I did. And I would, my last question, I don't wanna be to death, but in your experience, is, I mean, does, is an appeal a possibility for us? Because I don't wanna get our hopes up at this point, right, like, we were all set, we got our walls back up, we're ready to put flooring in, I don't know if I wanna do that with one pipe right now. So we're kind of putting our lives on hold because of this, and we're just wondering, is this just some false expectation, wishful thinking? Is there a track record of DCNR cooperating in, in instances like this, if you all don't know, that's fine, but if there's a way to find precedence to, to know that this is something that's appealable, and for us to invest our energy and our emotion into that?
The, the permit, normally when you're talking about appeals, they're related to specific permits, so there's a, there's a formal process with the Department of Environmental Protection, because they actually issued the permit.
Right.
But DCNR can just say yes or no.
Are good with us.
They're good with us, yeah. I think everyone would agree with that, that's meant with, with the DEP, in terms of the DCNR, I think the, I don't know that there's a formal process, but the, this sort of letter writing campaign and that approach is first step, and maybe we go from there, but if there, if there is a way that is more formal, um, we should certainly try and figure that out quickly.
And we're, I mean, I'm not to speak for everybody, but as many people as possible will participate and help with that, so we appreciate it. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, by the way, my calendar indicates that site visit was twenty-sixth of July, I think that's the date, you're, you're, yeah. It's that Wednesday, I believe, so.
I wasn't present, but it sounds about right.
Your colleague was the one who wrote the minutes, so I forget.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, sounds about right.
Whoever's next, I see like a little war breaking out over there.
Hello, great, it's Eky, uh, eighteen Mapleville Drive, I just have a question or two, Derek, you can probably help me with this. So, um, where are you, sir? Uh, so right now, the plan is begin construction again to reinstate one pipe. You're gonna go all the way to the curb and then the full length of the yard?
Yes, uh, from the, from the canal, the discharge point in the canal where it always was, and then run that line all the way back to the curb in the street, correct?
Okay, okay, yes. All right, and you're gonna make sure it's put in the right way? You, you're the guy.
Absolutely, yes.
So here's my next question. Current plan, I understand, you're gonna focus on one pipe, which it needs to be restored, but it's really not gonna help anything from where I'm sitting right now. Right, is your intention to fix that one pipe, then bury that pipe and then put grass all over it, and then walk away waiting for some permit that may or may not happen for a second pipe, and then have to tear everything up all over again, or are you gonna have it some, uh, or you have some kind of make or break decision point relative to the second pipe? That, you know, at some point it gets not cost effective to, to make more holes than you need to when you're already there?
Right, no, correct, and that's why we were always hoping to do both at the same time.
Right, so that's kind of what I'm worried about, is say you do the one pipe, you cover it up, you make it look pretty, not the same, but you make it look green, and then people walk away, and I feel we run the risk of forgetting it and leaving it, and we're still stuck with the same problem we had before the fifteenth of July.
Understood, I don't think anyone, any supervisor here or people on staff intend to forget about this.
That's good.
I, I would, my approach right now is just due to time and getting this pipe installed would be to unfortunately bury it and get your yard stabilized as best as possible, with hopes that letters and, and pressure does convince DCNR otherwise. I do not think, again, there's maybe two weeks worth of work at this time, I don't know if that answer would occur in two weeks, and that two weeks includes restoration. So it's gonna go in fast, and at this point in time, I'm putting one in with the room to leave for a second plate if we ever do get the approval in the next month, two months, three months, who knows?
Okay, so this will go into my next question, I did ask for this a month ago, I can't wait to hear what kind of progress you made on it. All right, so if that doesn't pan out, what I also asked for was for you guys to take a look further upstream and see what improvements we can make to better account for all the development that we've done and, and seemingly not done much by way of water diversion or, or channelization. So I'd like to know where you're at right now in looking at that upstream problem and what recommendations you might have right now that you're considering to improve keeping water just away from us. And that will be on top of that second pipe, because that seemed to be the immediate, immediate, we must have this answer, but now it's being put on hold and I'm just sitting here not any better than I was, and I don't feel good about it, so that's my question. I will sit down.
Paul, I, I, at this point, I, I don't know if you wanna go over sort of the proposed schedule and, and, and plan, there, there's some supplemental items that I can offer from that, but just in terms of some of the um, work that you're working on related to upstream conditions, um, may, may be helpful at this point. Sure, and I'd just like to hand out the schedule to the supervisors. I don't think so. Yes. Sorry, the text is a little small.
Anyone have a magnifying glass?
You don't want me to hold it up?
I'm good, I don't, I don't. Yeah.
Is, uh, where, is Jim? Jim, are you able to, are you able to share that?
They're, they're trying now, yeah, they're. Yeah, it's almost worth better.
I'll stay here all night. My favorite way.
Yeah, Jim, Jim's gonna attempt to pull it up, he, he has a V email, um, and then can, can put it on, put it on the screen, and we can zoom in particularly to the dates, not necessarily the, uh, right side of the document, but the left side of the document at least. Continue or wait for it to come up?
If you use your phone's camera, you can zoom in on it, that's what I just, it is, it is a bit small.
Did we start talking to it while, while Jim is trying to pull it up, or?
Yeah, that, that's fine if.
Jim, how long, what do you think, Jim?
Like, maybe if I, maybe I could just talk about some of the other stuff that's not sort of noted on the schedule, um, just for the board and the public's info- information. Um, so in addition to what RV is working on, uh, that again is outlined on the schedule, um, we have, uh, met with, um, another consulting firm, a, a company called Land Studies out of the Lititz area in Lancaster County, uh, who's done this work, um, uh, throughout the Commonwealth and, and, and beyond, uh, to talk about sort of upstream sort of solutions and a potential scope of work. Um, what they're recommending is to, um, essentially do a, 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 a visual assessment of the stream, so essentially walk from the upper reaches of the stream down to the lower reaches of the stream to try to identify, um, potential opportunities, they're in the process of finalizing that scope at this point, in which case I would bring back to, to the board. Um, but it's not, um, you know, it shouldn't be, uh, overly large from a cost perspective, because again, it's, it's just essentially a site visit, looking at opportunities and then doing some initial modeling to try to address some of the upstream conditions and identify opportunities to pursue further from an engineering and design standpoint.
How many private properties do they have to get on?
Um, do you have any idea in terms of the number of private properties?
Uh, not off the top of my head, besides the largest parcel would be, um, forty to one ten. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, generally, the, I mean, Derek is, is also been traversing that stream, um, that area.
Property owners are, are aware of us, you know, viewing it, there would be the large parcel that's un- unknown at this time, and then proceeding up to two ninety-five through those backwoods, which I have not done yet. And then everything else is, is probably right away or easement, drainage easement is given to us.
So Paul, I, I don't know if you wanna go over the work that RV has been doing. Not just our, collectively have been doing, sorry. No problem. So we took the advice to create a schedule, and, um, we've listed the major drainage projects, um, that will only go in the township near Maple Vale. Agreed. So basically each heading in brown or orange are the major projects, so there's about, we're listing five separate projects. And for each project, we give the overall tasks and milestones. This is, of course, our best assumption at this point, but it includes items such as design and engineering by our office, uh, review by the authority having jurisdiction, whether it's DEP or the Department of Environmental Protection or the Bucks County Conservation District, for instance. So each, um, approval and review that's required is listed. And we show also steps for construction and inspection, so we hoped this would kind of give a, our best case scenario and, well, best idea of time to design, time for review, approval, construction and inspection. So I don't, again, just wanna go, maybe just go over the specific nature of the, of the projects that are, that are on the, the sheet. Um, again, just sort of on a high level, just so the folks have an understanding of, of what is proposed at, at this point. Again, recognizing that there's, there's additional opportunities beyond which reflected on here, but these are sort of immediate, uh, things that we can start working on. And Derek, I don't know if you wanna supplement Paul's sort of discussion with that.
And if I could jump in.
We'll be posted, right, just for the, to the public, so we'll, we'll post this on the website soon, the first thing tomorrow, just so everyone can see it online.
Correct.
And Jim, I don't know, um, if it's, if it's possible to try to focus maybe on some of the future stuff, because I'm seeing a lot of July twenty-fourth kind of stuff, so people wanna know what's coming. I'm sorry, I, I know it seems so pesty, but people can't hear you, right, so, and.
Still learning your roles, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I, I know it's awkward, but.
Okay, so when I see this, this looks like your plan for what you're going to do, the immediate work that's gonna happen at eighteen Maple Vale Drive sixteen and twenty, is that correct?
It, it goes beyond that.
It goes beyond that, just like, what he's, so the next major quote unquote milestone projects are highlighted in the, in the orange there, burnt orange. So, so at, at the last supervisor meeting, Supervisor McCartney asked us to move forward with stream cleanout on our properties. So that is that, that phase right there that is highlighted, so, so we've contacted, um, I, I, RV's office is working with um, DEP on that, so, so those, that stream that's on our property, both upstream and downstream of Highland, on both sides of Taylorsville. Um, DEP on that. So, so those, that stream that's on our property, both upstream and downstream of Highland, um, both sides of Taylorsville. The next goal for us is to get in and remove any kind of wooded debris that's in that stream that could potentially be a clogged blockage. That is not necessarily a, a permitted activity. That is something we could do with just notification to both agencies. What is, what is a permanent activity would be the next phase two, which would be a little bit more time consuming because that requires again permits. Would be removal of any gravel bars, which would be digging in the stream to remove any sand, gravel. Physical obstructions of rock, things like that. So our goal next is to get in those two parcels. Again, remove any wooded debris, logs that are hold across the stream, vines that look like they're impeding flow. And then the next phase, once permits are received, because again, that's a permanent activity. That may require even further than the EP, maybe Army Corps due to length of stream. Would be then to go in and then do the physical removal of gravel bars, things like that, any kind of, uh, buildup debris at that point in time. So those, those are two other, uh, items that are on the schedule. And I believe the next, uh, item Jim has right there would be again, uh. Again, we talked about Maple Vale, that this was prior to the flood was always the phase two of Maple Vale drainage improvements, which is the improvements on Highland Drive. So that right now, RVE did go back, uh, they're working internally to re-review those drawings and ensure that those drawings are, were the best. Uh, that they could be. I think you guys already made some improvements or looking at some improvements. They actually are taking and looking upstream in, on Highland Drive to, which they never did truly map the drainage on Highland Drive to ensure that. They're collecting as much flow coming down as possible. So that's why that looks like that is taking a little longer when we had plans and things like that. There are, they are back in their offices tweaking those things, um, and possibly even adding an additional outfall, which they were originally tying into an outfall. So again, when you add outfalls, you trigger a permit. So that's why again, that's dragging on a little bit because they want to ensure that phase two. Is doing the best the phase two can do from a, from a flow standpoint.
But your completion date is still the end of this year.
That is, that is our goal. So you'll see when you look at it on, on, in your computer at home or whatever method. There's almost two options that if, if LMT forces my crews can do it internally. We're, we're hoping to get it done before right around Halloween. Or if, if our crews are too busy, again, there's a, there's a potential bid phase, but we're still shooting for that eleven-three completion date. Of the phase two project, whether it's internal or external forces that require bidding, things like that.
So this looks like it accounts for even a little bit of upstream work. Up to around Highland Drive, maybe a little bit further up.
That, that, yes, that is correct.
What about above that?
So, so above, so, no, so above that was what, uh, Mr. Craftner was speaking to was. We, he've contacted Land Studies to start reviewing to see what other basins or what modifications could be done upstream. Again, it.
So I, I would expect that they're going to issue their proposal probably within the next day or so. Um, ultimately that'll have to come, uh, probably at the next Board of Supervisors meeting for, for approval. Um, and then at that point they can get out and, and schedule and do that visual assessment. And again, try to identify other potential upstream activities that, uh. Okay.
I liked, I like what you did. It's helpful. It is. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we can absolutely.
Yeah, we're ha- happy to add and supplement that, yeah.
This does capture the second pipe somewhere. It may not be in a milestone in language, but. And still upstream because.
Yep.
You've got to keep water away from us. Just putting in an extra pipe, I don't think.
Sure. And Derek, I, I don't know, um, just to give some idea of, of the extent of stream length that we were talking about, like sort of the northern. Uh, or the, the upper reach to, to, to.
No mark on my head. Jim, I, I can't, I remember we looked at, I can't remember.
Just geog- generally, where, where does it start? Where does it end?
So that, that stream, uh, begins all the way up, uh, on the other side of two ninety-five, almost towards, almost towards Dolington Road, correct Jim?
It's near Merrick.
Near Merrick, yeah, Merrick Drive is almost where the, where that stream starts.
It's less than two miles.
Correct. That's, that's what it is. Two miles. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just, I run that loop all the time, Jason. So it's, it's not that long.
It's not. It's small. It's very small.
Yeah, the, the field visit will be fairly simple.
Yeah.
It will be useful, but simple.
If you could just step up to the microphone so people at home can hear you.
What is RVE stand for?
Remington Vernic Engineers. That's, we're the township engineer.
You're with that?
Yes.
On your room there, you should have spelled that.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Yep. All the way to the mic.
Thank you. Um, for the two pipes, can we just install the second pipe with a cap on both ends?
We, 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 I. We asked.
We did ask.
We did ask, yeah, we.
Actually, since you're on Meadow, you, you just reminded me, um. Have, have we done a field? That was a great question, by the way. That's, I like your style. Um. Have we done any field visits with, uh, I think Mr. Jeffries at one point we were talking to and, and others that are on Meadow. To, uh, take a look at the potential drainage swell behind the Meadow, uh, properties. Has that occurred yet?
Yeah, Jim, Jim can speak to that. In terms of Mr. Jeffries, uh, we, we were corresponding with a date and then he, he, um. Ultimately, for whatever reason, uh, said that he, he was, he was good. His, his questions were addressed. Perhaps it was through correspondence with, uh. With Jim.
I think the gentleman wanted to say one more thing and then.
I don't think any, well, nobody came out. I talked to Glenn and. Like, nobody came out, but I'd be happy to walk it through with somebody.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, again, Glenn, Glenn V email did convey that, uh, he was, as we were going back and forth with dates, he. For, I don't know what the reason was, but he ultimately said that, uh, um.
I do think, I mean, his comments and comments from others in the neighborhood that live on Meadow or, or. See what happens coming off, off of those properties, the backyards there. Um, it does seem like there's drainage coming back through there and there may be up or two. And I don't know, there may be opportunities to catch that drainage coming out of there before it loops around and goes back. To the, to the backside of Maple Vale. And I don't know if there's a way to pipe it to our property on the other side. I'm thinking out loud, but you guys know better than I do.
Yeah, I did meet with, uh, two of the residents who live on Meadow Drive. Uh, we walked through the backyard. The one lot. No longer had a swell there that I think was, uh. Uh, indicated to have been there at one time. The other property actually had a very well-defined swell. That the resident actually goes and cleans out every year or so. But there's a lot of obstructions along that whole backyard area to get stuff done. There are sheds. There are fences, there's vegetation and it's sort of, uh. It's something to take a little closer look at and I'd be happy to meet with, uh, the property owners further down the road.
Yeah, because I think one of the properties. What's the number? Two thirty-one maybe? Uh, it's on the corner. Kind of faces, it's on Meadow, but it faces Maple Vale near the spur. I forget the number. If. Where water, I, where, where I've been told water comes out in an event like this is right behind that property, just. To the west of the spur, so, um, might be something to look at separately.
That's my house.
Oh, that's okay. Good.
Yeah, it, it comes out and basically the houses on our street are a dam. And then the water basically runs out both ends into the road and then down. That's kind of.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we can definitely meet there. And actually, two thirty-one is one of the addresses I went to, but that's mid-block.
Okay, yeah, I, I figured I'd get it wrong, but thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know if somebody has a phone on or they're listening to something, but I am hearing someone's voice that's not at a mic and not.
Coming from the, uh, from their control room.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. Thank you, because it's being picked up up here. Thank you.
Real quick to the gentleman's point, the, the second pipe without. We have to ask for that or is that something we can just do?
With a cap.
We, we did ask the question, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, basically. Their answer was no, you can't do that, you know, because you're, you're installing it without permission, I guess, for discharge point. So I, I don't, I don't know the legality. I, I don't know.
They, they advised against, against it. I, I don't, um, so.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Scott Stebbins, um, resident of Lower Makefield Township, uh, representing my mother-in-law at two thirty-three Taylorsville. Um, in regards to the Meadow issue, a lot of the water from our property. Does jump Taylorsville, goes through the houses on Taylorsville to the backyards and. Either contributes or amplifies the issues that are already there. I know for a fact that some of those properties on Meadow. Do have some ditches that are defined as stated, but then some have. Uh, homeowners have created dams and trying to stop water. So I guess my suggestion or question to the board is, is it possible to create guidelines for how to maintain that? And should there be an easement along that ditch? There is a power line back through there and I don't know if it can be incorporated or expanded.
Jim, do you know if there's, Dave had asked the same question. Is there an existing easement, drainage easement there and anything of that nature that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any easement. Other than the utilities that we don't own.
Given the age of development, I would assume it probably was not an easement.
Yeah, I, it's not on the recorded plan for the development. And I've not found any record of an easement for that.
We'll keep looking at it.
So to, I, I guess to, to the extent that there's improvement there, then we would, we would, you know, in today's day, we would, we would. Obviously pursue an easement as, as part of the improvement project, um, with, with those individual property owners.
I'm sure it's.
And then that would be, that would be a, you know, a recorded instrument that, that in essence would provide us with, uh. Um, access to, to maintain and, and do what needs to be done there.
Well, there's some restriction as to people building things that obstruct the flow.
Correct.
It does push the water back and forth around the houses. Uh, that would be a concern.
I, I've just asked, uh, uh, Dan if he would work with the EAC because you, you raised a good point and now I'll get yelled at when I get home by my children. Um, when I was young, I went to something called Girls State. It's an opportunity sponsored by the American Legion and you get to meet with. Local representatives and I remember this woman giving us a lecture about how important it is that you keep your creeks clean. I'm from Queens. We have no creeks. I didn't appreciate what she was talking about. Now I do, right? We all don't realize like what we do on our property, how it affects. The property next to us or the property down the road. And we have to get better at that, right? We have to not think we can put our grass clippings into the little sewers there. Or dump our leaves. I know there was some. Maybe two years ago, we had some accusations from different neighbors that someone was not getting, putting their leaves into the stream. They thought that was a good way to get rid of them. Well. You know, they, they don't go away. So hopefully we can leverage the EAC and get some guidance and just keep talking about these issues to wait, raise awareness. Thank you.
And just to that point, this is, as everybody could see, this is an integrated problem that exists in different places. Because one thing occurs over here may affect it here. People don't have that appreciation and that has accumulated over time, to your point, everybody else's point. And part of what this board I know has already talked about. A comprehensive, in addition to all the other things we're talking about, the longer term issues, a comprehensive review of. Ordinances, stormwater orders, all these things that would be part of, um, hopefully a, a. Long-term systemic remedy to some of these, or not most of the issues to the extent that they can be controlled by the township within that scope. As we've talked about too, the watershed we're talking about, Mr. Zeki talked about this and he has a good point. But that extends outside the township. We're part of a watershed for that area that extends to, I think. Twelve seventeen municipalities, something like that. I forget the number. So. It has to be an integrated process, not only within the township, but outside too. But this, this shows that the complexity of it.
Hi, I'm Lorena Stoddard, two twenty Meadow Drive. Um. In the plan, I missed the plan. Did you say you were gonna attempt, Derek, to clean out behind, um. The land that we own that the Bridge Authority has access, an easier, uh, access.
Yes, yes, that's on the schedule to at least get the wooded debris out first, which is not a permanent activity. And then at the same time. Uh, Mr. DeFuries firm, RVE is obtaining the permits to remove any gravel bars that, that we'll discover.
And what date was that? I'm sorry.
We're, we're trying to get out to start removing wooded debris as soon as next week to get access and things like that. We just have to note, do notifications to DCNR or. I'm sorry, DEP. We just have to notify that we're doing it. We have to notify, uh, Conservation District because there may be a few trees that have to get down. So we can actually access it for equipment. Um, so as soon as probably, I would say you would see activity by the end of next week, I would, I would say is best guess.
And then are you going to go all the way to the canal? Are you gonna?
That is the attempt to go all the way to the canal.
Okay, so both the basin from the Bridge Authority and our little creek will have a place to go?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And just to make a comment on the flooding on Meadow. I don't, I appreciate that Mr. Skinner mentioned that, um, you know, a lot of his water comes down and crosses over. Um. We talked long ago, I think the last flood with regards to working with the state. Taylorsville Road and attempting something there. Did I miss that part of the topic tonight?
So we talked about that a few meetings ago, sending a letter to PennDOT, asking them to address. Stormwater management along Taylorsville. I'd also add in Dolington, uh, to that personally because of the nature of the watershed.
Did that go out?
Not included on the schedule because that's, that's more of a letter writing campaign to get them to address it. It's not something we can do as part of township, because we don't own the roads, but it's something that we can ask them to do. And I think.
Derek, do you want to talk about your communication with PennDOT, I guess, and?
Yeah, and, and you're, that was the conversation referring to. The last update that we had with PennDOT is that they realized that it's not a maintenance object. It's a capital improvement. So I do, the last conversation, I'm dealing with maintenance folk. I don't know where it sits with getting on long-term capital. But to, to Supervisor Granier's point, notifying PennDOT that we need drainage improvements. At a long-term capital along Taylorsville Road and Dolington also, believe it or not, yes.
In our letter writing campaign, we should be writing PennDOT. And note of copying all our senators and whatnot about PennDOT not responding to us for the last two years since we asked two years ago at the last flood. Is that right? Did we ask two years ago at the last flood when we said we needed help on Taylorsville? A letter went out then from you guys?
I think so.
So are you, did you write a letter this time or are you saying you want to?
No, we, we made a motion to Director Township Manager to write that letter. That was a few weeks.
Couple weeks. So that letter's gone?
I, I do need to follow up on that. I do apologize for that. I, I will, I will get that letter out, yes.
Okay, and then, so if.
There, there was email.
Five or ten years.
Respondence back and forth with PennDOT, but, uh, in terms of the letter, I, I will make sure that it gets sent.
So if DOT actually does actually fix the road, then there would not be an issue with the Meadow, um, having water coming across from. Um, Prospect Farms all the way down into our neighborhood like a river, like, because it's not just coming from Highland. I, I keep saying that, but nobody seems to really hear it. It's not just Highland. It's not just Dolington. It's coming from Prospect Farms and everyone behind there. And that's why the swell doesn't work. It's, there are a lot of blockages for the swell, but that front row on Taylorsville Road is already swamped. By the time it's trying to get to the blockage between everybody's neighbor's house. So that's, that's a little bit of a discouraging part, but good. Thank you for the letter. Thank you, David, for the letter. I appreciate that.
Michael Brennan, six Maple Vale Drive, uh. Pay you back on a couple of the, the previous two comments. I live right across the street from two twenty-one Meadow. And I talked about this at the update meeting last Wednesday. This last storm on July fifteenth, I just, I watched the water pour out from behind there and then go down Maple Vale Drive into the back. That's where most of the water that's going to the back of Maple Vale is coming from. There's less coming off of Taylorsville Road itself. And I, I've talked about this a couple of times. The drains that are on Maple Vale on that side. All the way at the entrance to the neighborhood, that's not where most of the water is coming from. It's not going to catch most of the water. That is going to the back of Maple Vale. That's more. Probably between two and four Maple Vale Drive is really where two twenty-one Meadow empties out onto Maple Vale. So somewhere. East of that would be a better place for those drains or to add drains in addition to what's already existing. And then the other question I had was. I looked at the, the plan of action. There's the, the stream cleanout. Is that something that's ever been done before, been done the past ten years? And this has been an issue for a while with the overtopping of this stream in a number of spots. Has there ever been a request to DEP to, to clean the streams before?
I've been here a year and.
Okay.
But the, from the information I can gather from personnel is no.
Okay.
And Jim, you've been here longer.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there's been no cleanup of the stream in the last twenty years.
Okay.
You continue to talk from the audience. Everyone thinks we're crazy because we're responding to voices they can't hear.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Adams just had indicated that there's been no stream cleaning since nineteen seventy-two. At least.
In seventy-two years.
Seventy-two years.
Oh, sorry, in seventy-two years.
Even, even longer.
Nineteen fifty-one.
Um, so besides. So besides that stream, there's some retention basins. What else is the, the stormwater management immediately west of Maple Vale? Uh, is that, is that it? Is it just the?
Depending on the each, each of the newer developments has a basin or basins per state, state and local laws. Uh, if they were built prior to that, let's say Hillwood Terrace Drive, there's a series of stormwater inlets that dump into the stream. They don't have a basin because that was also like Maple Vale was built in the sixties predating that. The other big issue, I think, uh, and I think the folks that are going to be doing this analysis on the larger watershed will tell us this for certain, is that neither, I remember correctly, neither Dolington nor Taylorsville Roads, two huge impervious surfaces that basically encapsulate the entire watershed have stormwater management at all. Um, so it's basically, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm not thinking about that correctly, but the developments themselves generally have stormwater management that the basins are managed to the, to the criteria that was in place at the time, but eventually dump into that stream, flow around. But Dolington and Taylorsville both, which are both state-owned roads, that covers basically the boundary of the watershed, do not have anything that I'm aware of.
And that's correct. Dolington Road, the parts of that that drain to this watershed, uh, water just goes over land. Some of it even comes from Pine Brook Farms on the south side of Dolington Road and they discharge into a pipe that goes into the Fiori property. That's the big open space parcel on Dolington Road. That goes into the stream. And the same with Taylorsville, there's virtually no stormwater management along that road.
And there's also at, at the very top of the watershed, the headwaters of the watershed, there's two very large farmland preservation properties that they're actively farmed that farms don't require stormwater management, but they're large parcels with experienced sheet flow that flows downhill and can overwhelm the basins and the, in the adjacent developments to them. I think we probably would, Derek, when you and I went that on the 15th that evening, driving around, I think we witnessed some of that, uh, what was going on. So there's, there's more. The developments have something generally, the roads do not, the state roads do not, and the farmland preservation areas do not. I'm, I'm probably oversimplifying that a bit, but that's generally what we see.
Okay. And what, what is the, of that, what is the township actually responsible for?
You want to take?
We would be responsible for the stormwater management that comes from the newer developments. And those would be the developments done after the Pennsylvania Stormwater Management Regulations that were put into place in the 1970s. Uh, so we're responsible for the detention basins that are up in Longshore Estates, which is up near Dolington Road, uh, and Dolington Road, Dolington Woodside. Uh, also Makefield Chase, there's a detention basin there where the stream bends and then turns into the Hillwood Terrace Development. We're responsible for the detention basin at the Estates of Prospect Manor, uh, those detention basins. I think uh, from evidence we've had from residents, those seem to function the way they were designed to be done during the storm. I believe the same Longshore, uh, they actually, uh, they actually triggered the spillway because of the intensity of the rainfall in such a short amount of time. Uh, and we are responsible for two culverts that are underneath Hilltop Road and Edgemere Road. And I believe those were replaced sometime in the 1990s. And I believe they increased the size of those to try to reduce flooding in the Hilltop area, although they still have flooding.
And as far as the, the stream goes, it's state property because it's a state waterway, but is the township the one that's supposed to be cleaned out or is it the state that's supposed to be doing that?
That, that stream is on actually, there are parts of it that are on private property. And there's parts of it that are on township property.
Okay. So to the extent it's on township property, is that the township or the state that's supposed to be cleaning that out if necessary?
It's on our property, it would be our responsibility.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you want to speak? Cause some, okay, can we let him have his first turn? Okay. You can stand, stand right behind him so that no one can jump in front.
I'll sit down in a minute. Uh, just in defense of, uh, the previous topic of ever going in there. I know for a fact in my 25 years being around the, the 233 Taylorsville, that, uh, the township road department did come in and clean that stream out. Uh, Hank Huffmeister was, uh, whatever, road supervisor at the time. And I believe that he did it two times. It might've been more than that, but my father-in-law and him worked that out. But access was through the properties that Derek used to clean us up this time. And on that note, whatever comes of this, I, I feel that there needs to be discussion of access to these waterways through easement or whatever, um, so that these things can be maintained. Because obviously it's a factor that has to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Adams, 221 Taylorsville Road. 72-year resident of Taylorsville Road. Okay. In my mind, the top priority is to not let any water reverse flow out of the stormwater inlets on Taylorsville Road from the creek. One of them was put there by Lower Makefield Township. Right there, just below the bridge at a very low spot in the pavement, not, not up against a curb. The other two, one on the one side and one on the canal side or riverside were put there by the Bridge, Toll Bridge Commission. I've tried to find out, did the Toll Bridge Commission get a permit from the state to do that? And I would hope you people with leverage could find out where they put there legally or illegally. No, I do not.
I, I do not know. I, I, I tried to find out as much information as possible. Uh, the inlet that he's referring to, uh,
are in the curbs.
There's, there, there's two of them. If I'm, again, I might be off. I gotta check a map, but I believe there's two of them on the east side of Taylorsville Road along the new curb that comes across Taylorsville Road to the inlet that's almost in the center of Taylorsville Road and then discharges into the creek. Is that correct?
Yeah, they all discard, discharge to the creek.
My, my guess is looking at the condition of the outlet of that pipe, it's an existing outlet that they tied into. So they probably did not receive a permit to install those inlets would be my, again, a guess, looking at the condition of the old pipe that's there. It's, it's an assumption.
Yes, I, I agree. Okay, there is a need to design piping to have this flow go to the 14.1 acres that Lower Makefield Township owns north of the Maple Vale Development. South of the interstate, east of Taylorsville Road and west of the canal. This would be a good solution. That area back in there, best to my knowledge, is sand and gravel. I'm sure somebody could make use of some fill. Lower that is 14.1 acres now. That's a lot of real estate that could be a basin and the water off of the blacktop pavement only of Taylorsville Road in any rainstorm could go back there. I was told there's quite a drop between where the water goes under Highland Drive, Taylorsville Road to the level of the normal level of the water in the canal. With that in mind, that would solve the problem of water, hopefully ever going back into Maple Vale again. But also the second priority is that Highland Drive Bridge is not wide enough to allow a terrible quantity of water, water which happened on the 15th underneath of it, and therefore it comes up and over the bill there and ends up on Taylorsville Road. If we just do those two things, we have solved a large percentage of the problem that has prevailed since the DeLuca Homes built the development up above there where there's just too much water coming off of that. It, it never overflowed onto Taylorsville Road before DeLuca Homes. But I admit the amount of water comes down Highland Drive uh, from that development, it has grown over the years because people have put second pavement next to the existing pavement, so they can have two cars in their driveway and they've put in uh, patios and whatnot. And, uh, variance has been given to them by this governing body. And now we're into a situation that we've got to correct it. There should be, those variances that were given out rather freely should never have been done and we wouldn't be in this mess. I'm hoping that you folks will make it top priority to put a stop to the reverse flow coming out of those culverts onto Taylorsville Road is a number one priority. And the second priority is to replace that Highland Drive Bridge with a wider underneath so water can continue down and look at the, uh, PennDOT Bridge also is, but I, I took measurements. PennDOT Bridge is 17 feet wide. And of course, the one on Taylorsville Road is considerably less. I, I got the measurements back there, but I don't have them in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
My name is Larissa Luzeki, 18 Maple Valley Drive. I have two questions. Uh, the first question is, you've started maintenance on the waterways. How often will you be checking on them? Will it be once a month? Maybe once every two weeks? What can we expect at this point? Cause it can't be one and done. You've started it. Now it needs to be maintained. So can anybody answer that?
I don't have an answer for that right now, but I know I do depend a lot and I, I try to convey this to everyone. I depend a lot on the residents. So a lot of that stream is through residential property in which the residents do own it. So I do, my office does receive calls throughout this township of, uh, issues or, or trees that fall in the sea. We, as much as we can control them, patrol them, we can't walk every square mile of stream. So we do ask residents if they see something to please say something and we will take care of it.
Residents know that?
Uh, we will, again, to Mr. Granier's point, work with the EAC to get things out to, to notify the residents that if we see, if they see a blockage of some sort, mind you, if it's on their property, it is somewhat of the residence property's responsibility. But if they don't have the means to, and we don't want to damage or destroy anyone else's homes, we'll work with them to get these things resolved. So we'll, we'll figure out a publicity way to get this stuff out to the residents.
Okay. So, um, that being said, isn't it the township's responsibility then to kind of oversee it? So maybe it's not every month, but maybe to kind of check in on these properties every couple of months?
And that's something we'll, I will work with to get a, an operating procedure in place to figure out how to do that moving forward. Yes. There hasn't been something in place. But I think it's a great idea that something needs to be in place.
My second question is regarding the construction of our roads, um, in our development. Um, it says here on this list, curb ceiling, which is, will, is, uh, scheduled to start on the, the 21st. What is curb ceiling?
So curb ceiling is just, if you ever saw after they're done paving, it's, it's the black liquid asphalt that they just put between the curb and the asphalt to seal that joint. So it's not a critical path item, but it's something that you do to make sure moisture doesn't get in there long-term and allows the pavement to last a lot longer.
So, um, as far as you're concerned, the little bit of, of road on the south side of Maple Vale that meets Taylorsville, is that the last of this construction? Cause it looks like that's where you've been working, but as far, with regards to the roads, the curb height, is that all done now?
The, the, the best guess is they're, they're paving, they're, the, the contractor just finished up, uh, Rolloffs and Ramsey with the 2023 road program. I believe they're up in, um, I can't think of the name of the street, uh, Yardley Run, they're finishing up Yardley Run. The goal is on Friday, they'll pave that stretch of Maple Vale done. We did drop that one inlet on the north corner about two, two and a half inches to get a little bit more flow into that inlet. And then they're going to pave that this week and that, that, that will complete that phase of Maple Vale drainage, those two inlets that were done there.
So I'm leading to my point, which is we're disappointed in the varying heights of the curbs throughout our development, the curb on Maple Vale as well, as well as Meadow. Um, the curb near the new drains is much higher than the curve around Meadow towards the north side where it meets Taylorsville, where it's about three quarters of an inch high. It's just very, it's, there's no standard. I believe we were told that the curbs would be higher, the road would be lowered. Um, I know you and I discussed when you came over about we're concerned about the curbs because we took a drive down Dolington um, on their newly paved road, which looks great. Their curbs are so high and those curbs are new. Um, and yet as we feel like stepchildren, ours were left to how they were since probably for years, since probably when it was first constructed. So that's why I'm asking about the completion. To us, it's not completed because it's, 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 it looks terrible.
In, in terms of curbs, I'm not sure which ones are referred, no, no, no. Which ones are you referring to on Dolington? I'm sorry.
Straight down Dolington, you know, there's a part, there's no curbs. Above that, it's all new curbs. We, we have the whole new road.
Okay. So, so the township, when we do our, again, when that, when Maple Vale was done under the road program, the road program for historically, the last 20, 30 years does not repair curbs. It does not repair curbs or curb height. It just repairs any broken inlets or inlets that are damaged for the stormwater management system. So I can't speak for Remington and Vernic when they probably investigated the curbs at Maple Vale as a drainage issue, not as an aesthetic or curb height issue. I, I'm not speaking for Remington and Vernic who designed it, but I believe there was issues. If you, if we replace those curbs under the road program, it would entrap water in the residents' yards. There was no way to drink, because again.
But it's on the road. How could it, it's, it's.
So you have.
Water into.
But now your property needs to drain, right? The grass, you want your grass to drain. So I know speaking with the prior engineer, we, I asked the same question. It, it's a drainage issue of, 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 of properties.
Would it just flow right into your driveway and then kind of flow out?
It, it wasn't, and I, I don't disagree with you. I asked the same questions. The answer was much more complex than that. And I, and I'll be glad to get you a, a formal answer of why that was because I asked the same question and I, I don't want to put words in someone else's mouth right now.
I mean, it's, it's disappointing to hear that because curbs look awful. They look terrible.
The, the curbs throughout this township look awful. I mean, they, they're, any neighborhood that's in the sixties that was built, they're all in disrepair. Yes.
Well, shouldn't that be addressed?
The, the.
It's not aesthetic. We don't care about.
No, no, and, and I, I agree. Yes, I, I agree. The, the curbs and sidewalks are the property owner's maintenance responsibility in terms of aesthetics.
But again, it's not aesthetic. It's, they serve no function when they're, when they're so low. At least it, it's going to direct some of the water. I mean, we're, we're grasping at straws because you know, we hear that we're not going to get approval for the second one. I mean, we need help.
No, no, I.
Everything should be looked at.
I, I agree. But, but to the point, again, I'll, I'll get you an answer of why the engineer didn't want to increase the curb height. But for, for example, the residents are saying the water's draining through Meadow. If we would have increased the curb height there, we trapped that water from draining even worse. You know what I'm saying? Like, like.
I do.
So that's, that's where I think it was a fine line of, would you do something or do you make the properties worse by doing that? That for draining through Meadow Drive, things like that. I know he had a struggle, but I'll, I'll get you a formal answer from RV.
Um, and on a personal note, um, would you be able to come over tomorrow? Um, because the easement area of, um, what the area in question, where these new pipes are going to go, is pretty large earth. And I would like to know where the existing ones would go, because I think that's going to shift over. And then possibly, hopefully, um, when you do get approval for the second one, where that's going to go.
Let, let me, I don't want to push it, but I'll wait, wait, if we can wait till Monday with the contractor, because he's the one installing it. I would just want to have him a part of the conversation, but I will. Yes.
You're not home.
Okay. Uh, that, that's fine. Yeah, tomorrow's fine.
Thank you. Thanks.
Oh yeah. Just real quick to your first point, as far as the, the creek maintenance and the, the, you know, the township area maintenance. Um, I think it's the consensus of the board as well as the direction that we've told the township manager that we really do want those areas maintained. Not just every 70 years, right? So I think that, that Derek and his, you know, his staff is going to make sure that he's in those areas. But again, if you see anything in those areas, please just give him a call. And Derek has the understanding that that's a priority to us as the board and to the township manager as well.
Along those lines, I think, one, we can get more, we can get more information.
we can get more information out to the public, so public's even more aware. There this isn't a new thing in terms of developing this type of informational stuff around the country. This is all, you know, stuff, stuff that happens. And in terms of just practical reviews from inside the township, we have hundred fifty or so basins that the township is is responsible for around the town. I'm estimating. But most of those basins feed into streams eventually. So when we're doing our our basin reviews on a regular basis, we can, I think it's wise to do a quick up up and downstream look from each basin as part of our normal operating procedures. And that that makes it much more efficient usually to do it that way. Obviously, there's other things we can do, but getting that in to your point, getting that into our normal review plan, if it isn't already, is is a simple way to get it, get it done.
Okay, if you could come to the mic, please. And then I hope I think we're done with public comment in the room.
All right, my question is of Derek. Derek, were you here, an employee of the township when Maple Vale Drive was paved by the outside contractor that put too much blacktop and that's why they got practically no curb? You joined Lower Maple Township after that.
I joined Lower Maple Township August twenty second of last year. I believe Maple Vale got paved, my guess is sometime in September. I I don't recall.
All right, I think it was before that.
Okay, slightly after, yes.
I will be filling out a write to know and I want to see the contract that this township gave that contractor to tell that contractor how much blacktop he was put there. More than likely, it wasn't specified is my wild guess.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room? Anybody online? Wow, two people online. If you could bring the first caller in, please. Is the caller on the line?
Hi, this is Lori Gray, uh, Lower Maple Township resident. Um, I was not directly impacted by the recent event, but I do want to help as much as I can. I'm sorry that I haven't been able to be there in person last few meetings, but I have been participating. I agree with Supervisor Granier's statements um earlier about writing, calling, but who do we write, who do we call? And what do we really say? And if that's something that gets perhaps get posted on the website, I think that would be very helpful. I know that I would certainly promote that within my neighborhood for all of my neighbors uh to call in and write in. Because our our neighbors need help and they need it now. So is that something that is possible?
Yeah, I believe we can put the names of the various um representatives from the different agencies up there in their emails. Good idea.
Great, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thanks for calling in. Dave, with another caller? Is there a caller on the line?
Hello?
Hello. Can you state your name and whether you live in Lower Maple Township?
My name is Lisa and I do live in Lower Maple Township. Good evening.
Lisa, would you mind giving your phone name, please? For the minutes. Thank you.
Lisa, you're welcome. I'd like to just have a few comments and questions, if that's okay. And I will be referring this evening to the Water Supervisors Meeting dated April sixth of twenty twenty two. In that meeting, and it sounds very deja vu, it was a discussion of a three-point approach to deal with the flooding that had transpired the previous September. First, do with a runoff from Highland Drive unnamed tributary with a addition of grates. Second, add additional inlets on either side of the roadway of Mapleville Drive and discharge them in pipes parallel to the Taylorsville Road South, discharging them on the land that is owned in the township. And then finally deepen the roads on Mapleville and Meadow where there is practically no curbs, then repaved, which would allow an additional one and a half inches of storage capacity within the gutter line. This seemed to be a good plan due to the twenty twenty two road program that would take place. What I'd like to do is just read a few comments from that evening and then have some questions, if that's okay. Um, I'm going to refer to page fourteen now of April sixth, twenty twenty two. Page fourteen of April sixth, twenty twenty two. It's the last paragraph and it states, Mr. Granier stated that there is an existing discharge in the stream that comes out of the two inlets at Highland and they do get covered with leaves all the time. Page fifteen, third paragraph, Mr. Granier stated part of the issue in the stream that runs along Taylorsville for a stretch often has fallen limbs and sandbars so that it is creating a dam effect and the plan is to keep that cleaned out. Page seventeen, allow me. From two twenty Meadow Drive, Mr. Reichel, and I may be mispronouncing his name, indicated, is it possible to do anything to expand or clear out the streams? As those who live on that side have indicated that the stream beds over top because of debris in it. Mr. Reichel stated if more water is now going to be put into it from Highland, it could create another problem that the stream is already full. Mr. Pockel, who I guess at the time was the engineer, stated it is part of the recommendation to remove the debris and gravel bars from that stream. My first question is between April the seventh of twenty twenty two, the day after this meeting, and July fourteenth, twenty twenty three, the day before the flooding, how many times has the stream been cleaned? I believe I've already heard that answer, the answer would be zero. Is that correct?
That's the best recollection of anybody, there's no record right now what what that was. So I mean, that's that's what we've heard at the meeting, but there's no official record of that right now that we are aware of.
On page, on page fifteen, third paragraph down, Mr. Granier asked, in regards to one and a half inch increase in the storage area, does that mean that none of the water will get into the homes anymore? Mr. Pockel stated theoretically, that is the goal, assuming that the curb heights are four and a half inches as opposed to three inches. My question is, between the dates of April the seventh, twenty twenty two, and July fourteen, twenty twenty three, what, if anything, has been done to deepen the roads to allow for proper curbing and greater storage capacity within the gutter lines?
That can't be answered at this meeting, I don't think.
I think Derek, that's part of the response that you were looking to give to Ms. Luzeki here with about the questions around the curb, right?
Correct, and again, not speaking for for speaking for someone else and I I need to clarify this. What during during the paving program, uh, RVE discovered that, you know, in in order to increase capacity, and and this was discussed at a few prior meetings, I can't remember, that the crown of the road was actually reduced from um an actual three-inch crown was milled out of Maple Vale and only an inch and a half was put back. So Maple Vale Drive was actually in profile view was flattened slightly to to maintain that same storage capacity that was discussed in in the meeting that you were that you're talking about.
Derek, all due respect to you, the next time it rains, why don't you come down to the home? Two, three, four Maple Vale. Why don't you come and watch what we see? There's a fire hydrant, there's not just no curbs, there's a curve. There's a fire hydrant right there at the curve. On either side, the curbs are three quarters of an inch on each side. There is no way the water would know how to be shepherded to the proper drainage. For the people that live in this neighborhood in the wintertime, they know this if they have dogs. When the snow is there, there is a blanket of ice that sits right there at that intersection and will not move because the water is not being encouraged to move. Curbs, just like gutters, are used to shepherd water to a drainage area. So I don't understand what you're speaking about, but I would just invite you, because I have the videotape, I would invite you when it's raining. Come down, Derek, and just stand at that intersection and see what is happening. Because if the water is not being shepherded and the curb is lower than the yard, it's much lower than the yard, all due respect, anyone would know it's going to race right into that yard and right to the back of this development. Now, let's continue on. I want to go to page eighteen and that would be the third paragraph down, where twenty Mapleville Drive, which is exactly where the sinkhole is located now, April was there. April stated her home is next to the new pipe and there's a huge influx of water during these storms. There's a lot of erosion in the back of her property, so the pipe is exposed. She asked if there will be any remediation to the land that has wiped away over the course of the storms that have happened. She stated the water goes over the pipe because the pipe cannot hold all the water. Between the dates of April seventh, twenty twenty two, and July fourteen, twenty twenty three, what has been done to deal with soil erosion?
And if I can just add one point, this is Paul DeFury from Remington and Vernic Engineers. Um, I'd be happy to share my information with anyone in the caller uh on the line now and my office would be happy to provide and answer any questions uh that the previous individual provided in your meeting minutes. So I appreciate Derek uh helping to answer the question, but our firm is happy to answer any of those questions and my information can be made available.
I look forward to that. Also on page eighteen, uh, the same resident said, ask as to the regard to the drain, is there an option of putting out a cage in the event of a a splash storm? While it might be a hazard because of the road, they could cone it off. She stated that neighbors go out and try to keep everything out of the drains on their own. And this was the same verbiage that Mrs. Gamble so vehemently and passionately tried to express to the members here last Wednesday. The response was, Mr. Ferguson, I know that he's no longer here, but everybody who takes a new job vets the job and they know exactly what they're walking into. Mr. Ferguson stated he feels there could be a discussion with the Public Works Director as to what some options could be for the neighborhood. I would like to know when that discussion took place and what did you discuss?
Do you have any additional questions? I mean, I appreciate that you're looking for information and and I it is our best effort to give you that information. But I I can't say that I'm going to speak for everybody on the board, maybe I should just speak for myself. Since I didn't know that these questions were coming, I didn't have a chance to look into them. So if you have any additional questions, if you could please state them and we'll figure out a way to get you information.
And actually, ma'am, that is a wonderful suggestion. What would be the possibility of us expressing questions ahead of the meeting? I would be delighted to do that. There is no feeling at all of trying to um be disrespectful. But if we are doing our part to try to go back and look at the past, we're kind of living this again, then how do we get questions to you so that when we come to these meetings, they are very substantive and both parties feel like we're getting what we need?
Yeah, you know, everyone who's, I mean, since I've been here, I mean, we have email addresses, that's one way. I I think that the T, the staff has been incredibly responsive in um trying to get information out. So I would encourage you to email, let's we'll start with Dave because he is the township manager. So feel free to email him any questions you may have and we'll do our best to get your responses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's, yeah, so it'd be dekratzer, K R A T Z E R at L M T dot org, yes, that's correct.
And if, you know, I always go to admin at L M T dot org because I'm not a great speller.
Yeah, that that's that's what I was going to, the other option would be admin at L M T dot org as well. And that that's generally where we've been directing folks, just so that it's in a um sort of a central area.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
There's no more public comment at this time.
Okay, we're going to take one more question and then we're going to move back to the regular
I promise it'll be a fast one, sorry.
I appreciate it.
No, no, just
You guys know me, okay. Um, just in regards to getting those questions to you, just so we're not duplicating efforts. Like if someone already asked you the question, I don't want to put that I'm asking you the same question. Is there some sort of form we could fill out, some sort of place we could, a centralized location where we can see the other questions? Because it also might spark another question or answer something for someone else. So I appreciate the email, just, we don't need this answer today, but maybe, I know we have a meeting next week, if there's some way for us to just have a collection mechanism for that.
Yeah, we can work on that. I mean, I know we've we've committed to, you know, trying to make sure that there's an up to date
Yeah, we can
information source and we'll continue to try to make it, you know, as accessible as possible.
Okay, thank you, that was all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no, please, can we go back to the agenda?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to suggest is if we can, if there's a possibility of taking advantage of all these new web-based resources that we have.
Yeah, Jim and I have, what I was going to mention and we'll we'll pursue it further. Um, we we have had, as you know, we have a relationship with Zen City, there's an Engage site which permits two-way communication. So it would be better than sort of the static um communication that would be possible via the webpage. So we did talk about um you can almost set up a geo-fence sort of closed area um or or not. Um, so there there's opportunities to leverage that technology for purposes of that, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you. It's nine oh eight, so if anybody wants to leave, you don't have to leave, you're welcome to stay. But I know traditionally when we close as part of public comment, people would like to leave, so we'll give you a few minutes if you want to leave.
Item eleven A under managers report is an update of the seven fifteen twenty three flash flood update, do we effectively, is there anything else?
Yeah, I just a couple, couple additional items. Um, one, April spoke about in in her um her initial comments and just sort of recognized, we 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 do continue to wait uh for uh determination or communication from Pima relative to the availability of um public assistance uh and or individual assistance. So um, you know, as we're telling folks, continue to report that damage as there are thresholds that that need to be met in order to achieve that. Um, additionally, um residents that have reported damage to us uh will be receiving a door hanger from the United Way. So we we've been in communication with the United Way concerning um not immediate response stuff, but services that they have available, uh to the extent that there is still immediate response um items, they can address those. Um, but uh there will be a door hanger that's going out. And again, we'll distribute those on behalf of the United Way as in partnership with with that organization um to uh to the residents that have reported damage to us, we'll also post that information on our on our website as it's as it's been. It's largely going to be repetitive information. Again, this information was distributed in prior notices via hand delivery by the Public Works Department uh and then also uh on our social media channels and website, but we'll 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 be doing that as uh an additional effort. The United Way has communicated that no one has reached out to them at this point. Um, they're there, they're available. Uh, again, as folks are transitioning back to school or there's issues with appliances, those kinds of things. Those were just, we don't know all the details in terms of the services that they have, but those were some of the things that they conveyed. So again, would encourage folks uh to use resources that 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 are available, uh obviously, um in trying to um try to address the the circumstances that um uh that they're dealing with. So those were the two additional items that I had that that we have not
Related to those resources, it, you know, given that nobody has reached out to United Way for for assistance, um, I guess I would encourage anyone that has been affected to do that. It's, you know, there's I don't I don't know the, personally, I don't know all the services they offer, but from what I've seen, um, they do offer a lot of very helpful services that people can take advantage of. Um, and it's, I would say it's worth a phone call to see, legitimately, it's worth a phone call to see because it could be of, could be a big help in in short order for you as we're as we're dealing with other things. Um, so if we can help spread, I know door hangers are door hangers, we all get them for different things and sometimes they just go in the recycling bin. But it it is, it truly is worth worth looking into how United Way and others would be helpful.
And and again, as you, as they have a network of resources, not only internal resources, but also with other sort of sister organizations that they um collaborate with. And so uh I I think that's that's great advice for folks to 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 reach out, even if the immediate response effort is is sort of over at this point um in in terms of like house cleanup, but but they they're still available to do that stuff, but there are other resources beyond that.
Back to
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for August second, twenty twenty three.
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier, is there any discussion? Any public comment? And with that, I call the question, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And can I just, um no?
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just going to back us up for a second because I was so anxious to get to public comment, I skipped over some things. Um, we accepted the resignation of um Supervisor Weiss. Um, and I would ask for a motion to consider, well, so technically what happens now Well, so technically what happens now is I am acting chair until we reconstitute the board. And I would be looking for a motion to um have a vice acting vice chair appointed.
Uh, Ms. Chair.
Oh.
Ooh.
I was like, go ahead and I'll second it.
I'm sure I move that we appoint Supervisor uh Grenier as vice chair.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any discussion? Any public comment? With that, I call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, at this point, do you want to talk about process related to the vacancy?
I would love that. Are you able to do that?
I'd be I'd be I'd be happy to.
Come one, come all.
Sure. So uh, as the board is aware, uh and for the benefit of the public, uh now with the acceptance of the resignation, uh the Board of Supervisors um has thirty days to appoint uh a successor to the unexpired term of Dr. Weiss. Um, the board has discussed, and this will be all placed on uh the township website and communicated via the township social media channels uh to accept resumes and letters of interest uh from parties uh through uh September the first, uh so the the close of business on September the first. Uh, and then um is looking at scheduling a special meeting on September the fifth uh for purposes of conducting interviews and uh potentially making an appointment uh in advance of the board's meeting on September the sixth. Um, if the board is unable to uh reach a consensus in terms of his successor, uh, the process at that point from a statutory standpoint is that the vacancy board would be convened. Uh, that would can that would consist of the four remaining members of the Board of Supervisors and the appointed vacancy chair, Adrian Costello. Um, but again, that remains to be seen as to whether the vacancy board would be convened. Uh, they would have fifteen additional days to make an appointment per the statute. Uh, and then in the event that that body was unable to do so, um, what would happen is you would petition uh the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas for purposes of the appointment. But that's just a general overview of process. Uh, again, um, in the initial step is the solicitation of interests, uh and those will be due on September first. And again, we'll post that information on the township website and and share it via the social media channels that the township uh um has.
I would say for anyone considering it, as I am, I was appointed to the board by such a process originally before I was elected. Um, it just takes a letter and a resume and then, you know, anybody who is interested, it's a four month, right? You you are not uh going to have the opportunity to serve for long because there is an election this November in which two new supervisors will be elected or two supervisors will be elected. So we need help. We need help from the community. We need it for a short period of time, but an important period of time because we are entering budget season and there are a lot of important decisions. So please consider.
Just one other note, if I may. Um, so the the uh in order to be considered for an appointment, um, an individual must be a registered elector of the township uh and have had residency within the township with within a a one year within continuously for one year prior to the appointment. So there are some qualifications. Again, we'll communicate those on on the website.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're back to the agenda. Thank you all for your kindness and we're up to agenda item number eight, which is the treasurer report.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Chair. Uh, for eight A, I'd like to uh make a motion to consider approval of the July twenty twenty three interfund transfers in the amount of nine hundred eleven thousand five hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty two cents.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McCartney, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any public, any comment? Any public comment? Hearing none and call the question. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero.
And for eight B, I'd like to uh make a motion to consider approval of the warrants list from August seventh, twenty twenty three in the amount of one million six hundred and fifty nine thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars and eighty four cents.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McCartney, seconded by Mr. Lewis. All those, sorry, any comment by the board? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries uh four zero. Now we have a presentation from the Historic Commission um regarding the Slate Hill Cemetery. Ooh, look at that big smile.
Hi, I know it's getting late. I will be brief. Um, I'm Monica Hinden. I'm a resident of Lower Mcfield Township. Um, and I'm here representing the Historical Commission to tell you a little bit about Slate Hill Cemetery and what we've been up to and some of our future plans. We met with David a few months ago and he thought it would be a good idea to kind of fill you guys in. So as you hear more in the coming months and maybe see some minor budget requests, you'll know what's going on. So this presentation was presented by myself, Joe and Tom, who were not able to be here tonight, but I know they're watching on Zoom. Hello, gentlemen. Um, so uh, I'm going to read the the quote at the beginning to get us started um by Sir William Gladstone. Show me the manner in which a nation cares for its dead and I will measure with mathematical exactness the tender mercies of its people, their respect for the laws of the land and their loyalty to high ideals. We have an incredible historic cemetery right in our backyard um on Yardley Morrisville Road, right as it turns into Main Street, um next to Yardley Commons. Uh, it is one of the oldest cemeteries in Bucks County, but it really is up there within the United States. Our oldest surviving tombstone in the cemetery is dated sixteen ninety eight. And um the oldest in the entire United States is sixteen ninety seven. So it's a really big deal. We also know there are older burials there, but this is the oldest room uh surviving tombstone. There's two sections. Um, one was originally Quaker, the other was um for Presbyterian Methodist and Baptists. Um, we believe William Yardley's there based on his uh will. And um it is, I think it was in nineteen ninety two, uh, it became the property of L M T and um that same year, it also um was recognized on the National Register of Historic Places. Um, so sadly, it was kind of in disrepair. We haven't been paying much attention to it. Um, in this spring, based on a condition report we did, we saw multiple headstones fallen over, lots of overgrown trees, some dead trees, the crumbling um retaining wall, a lot of tombstones that you can't even read. And, you know, some of those are just cosmetic issues, but some are safety issues. Um, so we met, uh, we met with um David and Derek to talk about that uh and got some really great work done. So as you can see, we started the spring in pretty, pretty sad shape. Um, yet in the spring, we started doing some community cleanup days. Uh, we had a lot of members of the community come get involved, uh some Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops. Um, and we actually did two because there was so much to do. I ended up needing two different ones. Um, and then in June, um Keith, excuse me, Chief Kalutzy was um kind enough to um give some of his team and their equipment to do a radar survey. Um, because if anyone's gone over there, and I hope you will after this, because it's really fascinating, there's lots of open space and we know that this was a very utilized space. So um with the use of the radar technology, we were able to to note rows of something under the ground. I think we can all assume um what a lot of that was, and we will be able to utilize that information in the future to ideally, you know, mark some more graves, do some historic research on these founders of our community. And then lastly, we started marker cleaning um in the spring and we're continuing to do so. And um basically, we use a solution that's approved by the National Park Service for this exact um use because you cannot, there's a lot of things you can do to hurt these stones. So anyone that's listening, if you get the idea of her cleaning stones with bleach or something, please don't. There's specific solutions you're supposed to use. But as you can see, uh, Mary Baker uh on in her original state immediately after cleaning. And the great thing is about this solution is it continues to clean afterwards. So they get brighter and brighter. Um, so now we can actually know who Mary is and as people passing by can actually recognize her. And we have additional before and after stones. These aren't all the ones we're clean, we've cleaned. These are all some of our favorites. Um, but I think it's very important to us as a community to recognize these are our neighbors. These are our founders. These are the people that really set this place up for us. And we should give them a bit um of respect. And now we are by by um showing them to the community. And here's kind of an after picture of where we are. Um, after the community cleanups, um, the Public Works Department came in and um cut down some trees that were unsafe, did a lot of trimming. We did a lot of um tombstone cleaning. So it's it, it's looking in really great shape right now. Uh, just a note on some of our notable residents in the cemetery, as I mentioned, William Yardley. Um, Joseph Sharp is our is our stone that is the oldest surviving, but you'll recognize names from our history. The Powenals, the Ledums, Van Sands, the Huff's are there. There's a lot of names that if you're recog- if you know any of the history of L M T, you'll recognize these names. And there's a lot of Civil War veterans. We even have some Revolutionary War veterans. Um, we did, uh, there was a dedication ceremony in twenty twenty, I think a lot of you know about, for um a group of U S colored troops that are buried there, um, which we're really proud of. So just recognizing, these aren't just old stones. This is our community and we want to, you know, respect it. So our strategies and goals for the next couple of years is our short term. Um, the numbers in here are are gauges and whenever possible, we're going to be submitting for grants for these kind of things. But just to give you an idea of kind of the scale of things. Um, every, all of our goals uh are within three pillars, honor, respect and connect. Um, our first being um honor, we want to create interesting and easily accessible interpretations of the hap- inhabitants of Slate Hill Cemetery. Meaning, you know, educational experiences. We really want to make it um an interesting experience for people. First and foremost, cleaning those grave markers so that we can actually read um the information there, which we're doing within the Historical Commission. And then our goal is to do two rounds of grave marker restoration um starting in twenty twenty four and then another in twenty twenty five, which is really just writing a lot of those stones that have fallen over, ones that are broken, getting them fixed correctly um so that they can uh not only be legible and experienced now, but also in the future. Um, within respect, we want to create an inviting space, obviously respect the space that it's in. That's continued tree maintenance and debris removal. We're working with Public Works to ensure a regular schedule instead of being reactive. We're going to be proactive because ultimately that's a safety issue because people do walk through there and hopefully after this they will more so. Um, continued long care in the space. Um, and then we will be doing an annual community cleanup every year um on the same weekend. And then within connect, we want to create community outreach events to bring people to the space. Uh, we're gonna start a uh put together a website that lives on L M T dot org specifically for Slate Hill with with specific pages within it on different um historical inhabitants. Um, as well as social media, we've already started an Instagram account that I hope you guys will follow. Um, we have a really interesting QR code project that I'll get to um in like two slides. Um, and then events, our goal is to do more events. Um, we've done ghost tours in the past. We're bringing that back this year. Um, and ideally some more interesting events once people get a little more um aware of the space. And then in twenty twenty six onward, it's really uh maintaining what we've started in the last couple of years. So continue grave marker cleaning. Um, we continue tree maintenance, long carry, the cleanup. We do want to repair the wall. That's a really significant project. We've agreed that the the markers themselves are more important, they're key. So we're doing those first. Once that's in place, we really want to try and restore that historic wall. And then um within connect, we want to do more interpretation, educational projects and um events. So this project that I'm talking about, and that will be the end of my presentation, I promise, uh, our goals within this are to make the historical um information on these residents available to people because right now it lives in a handful of brains and some documents in this building. And that's, we owe them more than that, right? So we want to make it um accessible to others. We also want to engage visitors in person and ideally through technology. So hopefully we can bring younger residents in and get them more involved, not just in this one little space, but in the concept of being a community, supporting each other, understanding our history. So first step in that is creating the website, as I mentioned. Um, and then the second is creating QR codes that will be placed at certain graves. Uh, we're planning to start with twenty five. Um, and that would, as I said, the QR code would direct you to the specific person's um page. And ideally, that page isn't just basic information about them, but really some historical information. If we have an old letter of theirs, we can get someone to read it. Um, we can have music from the time, just multimedia stuff to make it more interesting. Uh, make it kind of a uh living history in the in the space. Uh, we're planning to um apply for a CLG grant for this. And as you can see, the, you know, it's relatively um low maintenance. Um, and so here's an example. And for anyone in this room, if you have your smartphone out, you probably do. We all have them in our laps all the time, or if anyone is watching at home. Um, you can scan this bar, this QR code right now. And for the purpose of this, because we don't have the site set up yet, it'll take you to um the Slate Hill Cemetery Wikipedia page. When it's up and running, this would take you to William Duncan's page with his information. Um, so it can be a really great experience while you're in the space and you see these stones to connect with them. But all of that information is still available online for anyone that has access to the internet. So it's available to everyone. And that's the end of my presentation. Um, here is our Instagram account. I would hope you all would follow us. We have a ghost tour, as I mentioned, coming up. It's scheduled for October fourteenth with the rain date of October fifteenth. Um, and anyone that wants to get involved, you can reach out to us through Instagram. Uh, we'd love to have anyone and everyone involved. And I love talking about cemeteries. I'll stop now. I know it's quite late.
So I'll just say thank you so much. Uh, my husband just texted me and asked if you would apply to be supervisor. So you know, there you go. Um, I know John was out there in the cleanup. I think it's wonderful. Uh, I come from New York where we have a lot of historic graveyards and we do a lot of reenactments. So I love that idea.
Greenwood.
Yep. Thank you. So um, thanks for all that you and everyone else who's worked on this has done for our community. Right? That's how we move forward.
Our pleasure.
Anyone else?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten, engineers report.
Hello, supervisors. We have provided our engineer report. I have nothing to add at this time. And I'd like to open up for any questions.
Any questions from anyone on the board?
Yeah, I just quickly, um. Can you give us a quick update on Woodside Road Bike Path and where we're at?
Sure. So we just met with Pico and Verizon on Friday. And we are in the process of working through and revising our plans to relocate utility poles. Um, so that's in the process right now and will be submitted to uh Verizon and Pico for review.
And then um hopefully they're quick about it. I know they're 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 not always that way, but we'll push them. And then the other thing, I know we've applied for a couple of grants as part of the our pollution reduction plan and and whatnot. Have we it within the last few months? So I'm not sure. Have we heard back on on any of those just yet?
So I will have to get back to you tomorrow about any grants. Uh, I'd be happy to answer those questions tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm not the way, I mean, just uh and Paul can confirm, but I'm not aware of any response as it relates to any of those applications at this point for the uh PRP projects.
And then the the soil sampling that's been done at Patterson Farm, it looks like we're we're awaiting some additional results or some results if they're not additional.
I I believe so, yes. And we can, we can follow up on Paul. If you would could find out where your uh folks are on that one, that would be good.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I'll get you those answers by tomorrow.
And we we've obviously covered the biggest issues on our on our plate here. That's it for me.
Any public comment? Okay, moving on uh to item number eleven, the manager's report.
Uh, so in regards to eleven A, which uh was uh concerning the flash flood event, um, I have no additional updates. I I don't know if any members of the board have any additional questions on that, but um happy to address those if 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 there are. Um. The next item, uh eleven B, uh relates to um authorization to advertise uh an ordinance to amend the short term lodging uh facilities uh criteria or ordinance that currently exists. Um, the proposed ordinance um uh in its simplest form uh provides for um a license to be permanently revoked. Uh, so currently there's there's uh language in the existing ordinance that talks about um uh essentially temporary suspension or temporary revocation, uh but nothing uh as it relates to um a permanent revocation. And so uh the primary amendment to the ordinance um uh relates to uh sort of a three strikes and you're out kind of kind of rule o- over uh a five year period of time, uh which would permit uh again, uh the ability for that license to be revoked uh if there are issues that are inconsistent with the with the ordinance requirements within that. Uh, if there are issues that are inconsistent with the with the ordinance requirements within that, three issues, three violations within that five year uh, period. Um, so that is sort of fundamentally the substance of the uh, of the proposed change to the ordinance. I don't know if the solicitor has any uh, additional comments uh, or um, context to provide to the board.
The reason why we we selected or we we spoke with uh, the manager's office about this, uh, uh, the five years we selected, note it's within five years. There's some talk about one year, the problem was with one year, somebody may manipulate the system, so they have two violations in eleven months and twenty nine days, and then decide five days later, they 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 could have another one, then the clock will start all over. So we're, we're trying to find a way that we could capture those and hopefully there aren't going to be too many, but the ones that do, they will know that there is a process here and a timeframe within which uh, they'll be monitored and if it's reported, we will aggressively follow up as we have in the few instances that we've had in the township, so.
Can I have?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the advertising of the amended short term lodging facilities ordinance.
Thank you. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Grant. Any comment from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, just a quick one. Um, I'm very supportive of this. We need to give our code enforcement team the tools they need to help protect our community. This is is one of them. It's it's something I think all of us have made uh, tweaked over the years. Um, and when we first started, uh, there were a lot of people thought this was a bad idea, but now no one's saying that. If anything, they're saying we want to do, make sure that this keep continues to work well. So big supporter and I'm I'm hopeful that uh, we'll get this passed soon.
Very quick, and the the time, the three, three strikes and five years kind of deal seems, seems almost intuitive, I guess, in that it makes, it makes sense, but um, it's enforceable and as we have precedence for this and a- all that stuff in case of litigation and all that.
Additionally, the, once the, assuming the ordinance is eventually adopted by by the board, there will also be notice that's provided on the actual application. So so um, in addition to uh, just sort of the 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 language that'll live in the code of ordinance as there will be notice to applicants as well. Um, so that was one of the recommendations of of uh, the Solicitor's Office as well.
Because there are people who are, they're 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 good neighbors, yeah, I'm trying to think of the right phrasing, I'm forgetting. Uh, but they're they're behaving in in uh, the right way, fault, trying to follow the ordinance. So we want to make sure that they they have all the information so that they can continue to manage their properties as such, so.
No further comment from the board? Any public comment? Then with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is consider authorization of a proposal from uh, Remington Vernic Engineers uh, related to the Big Oak Road sidewalk improvement uh, project. Um, the um, scope of that work uh, essentially relates to uh, construction management and observation. Jim, you feel free to jump in as you see fit. Um, the uh, cost, uh, the anticipated cost is uh, twenty four thousand three fifty for those construction management services uh, with a hundred and fifty dollars uh, just estimated from from a reimbursable expense uh, perspective. Jim, I don't, again, I don't know if you want to provide some context on this project, uh, because there's multiple parties involved.
How's this? Okay, now I can hear myself. I thought it was really going deaf. But you may recall, this is the project along uh, Big Oak Road, front of the Regency Project to connect their two communities, the Carriage Homes and the Singles. Uh, the project is underway and Remington Vernic will be doing the construction inspection out there and uh, processing payment applications and the like.
I'll make the motion. I move that we uh, authorize or approve Remington Vernic's twenty twenty three Big Oak Sidewalk Improvements Proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion by the board?
I'll go first, yeah. Um, this would be covered from the infrastructure fund that's part of the Regency Settlement then, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the other, Michael Baker, they're the ones building it then? Uh, or they did the design, right?
Michael Baker did the design.
Okay, and?
They're also providing some uh, construction support when questions come up during the construction.
Who's doing the construction?
T. Schiefer Contractors, I believe is their name.
How much are they in for on this project?
I believe the bid was approximately four hundred and twenty nine thousand something.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so I think we're still well within the budget that was laid out for the entire project, including engineering and inspection costs. And uh, and as things go along, you know, if there's any uh, little extras, they shouldn't be significant on this project.
Has, and I know SAFE worked on the design here, so they reviewed the design on this one. As well, it was because it was part of their original design, correct?
Yeah, they did the original concept plan, and so we've had a lot of eyes on it. And even then, there's still always something that comes up. It's just the way it is.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I, oh.
Oh, yeah, I just, has he, the contractor, has he completed any other work in L M T within the last twelve months or?
No.
So this is his first go at anything at all within township?
That's correct. I did speak to a a number of other uh, places where they had done work for, and they were all pleased with their work.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, um, the, the amount, Dave, this might be for you, uh, the amount, what our threshold for having to go to R F P or to go to bid uh, to others?
Yeah, uh, recognizing this is a professional service, you you it wouldn't, wouldn't be subject to any, any requirement there, yeah.
Was there any consideration for that, just in case?
Uh, there was not any, any consideration for um, additional sort of construction management services. Again, there was other design engineers involved in this project, and so R V E was um, uh, being discussed as the, as recognizing that the township is here.
And in terms of um, in in terms of the inspectors in the field and, you know, the answers to it. Um, the number of inspectors in the field, the frequency of them in the field, I know, louder, sorry. Um, I'm, my question is is related to um, the number of inspectors in the field, the frequency of inspectors in the field. I know previously, uh, with specific to inspection services, different projects often associated with roads and whatnot. Um, we've gotten some feedback in in Regency, actually. Uh, I think Mr. Pedowitz has has come to the board a few times with with questions or concerns about specific inspection matters. Uh, I just want to make sure that um, we have, that this covers uh, inspectors in the field that will be there on a regular basis so that they can see stuff going on as it goes on, so that I don't want to say, so, anything that the contractor may may do incorrectly is caught before it's covered up with with some aesthetic, so you can't inspect it. They buy the mic, all right, so.
Yeah, and the 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 inspector uh, will be out there in sufficient uh, times to ensure that the work is done correctly. And also Michael Baker, the design engineer, has in their contract to come out and do some inspections just to check on stuff. And I've been out there a number of times already myself.
So if there are any, like, what I would often refer to as a field change request by the contractor during construction, that would go, there's a process for that, for them to go through you and or Michael Baker to get approvals. Then the inspector would make sure that those are done according to any, any uh, official requests.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's one thing that uh, we try to impress on the contractor, that you have to let us know if you see something or if, you know, there's something needs to be adjusted.
So I'm going to be a little bit more direct than my fellow kind supervisors. Um, this is a big project that has a lot of moving parts. I know that we have um, had some fantastic insight from professionals, but I would expect that we will be updated on it every time we meet so that we don't lose track of anything, that if something has to change, we're given as real time information as possible, because there's just too much on the intersection. Some of us were even hesitant how to take this on, but we've got to get it right. So every time we meet, let's talk about this.
And I believe probably at the next meeting, you'll have a payment request from the contractor for this, at which time the board can be updated.
Excellent. Any public comment?
Oh, go ahead, John. I was just going to say one last thing before uh, we go to public comment. I don't know how familiar Paul you are with the folks at Regency, um, but they are very dedicated and will uh, work as shadow inspectors on your behalf. And um, they will go to great lengths to follow up when things are not where they need to be. And uh, I can say for myself, I've been out there many times uh, in dealing and and bringing Andy out there uh, multiple times. So um, I I just want to, in the, as if I can borrow a phrase with, from Ringo Starr, "I'm warning you with peace and love." Um, the the folks there are very, very particular and they will, they will inspect the heck out of this, and they've been pushing for this very long time. So um, just a heads up that they will expect uh, aggressive uh, inspection and follow up and communication.
And if I could just add one note, um, I just spoke to one of the inspectors that's on site frequently, and we're in in contact and he's going out anytime there's construction. So uh, we, we're readily inspecting and and involved.
Any public comment? John, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Three one. I was a nay.
Oh.
Thank you.
You're so quiet. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes three one. Hey, Dee.
Yeah, so the next two items, I I would ask Mike if you could come up, um, Mike Atara from Spirit Golf, um, the management company that manages um, now Makefield Highlands Golf Course on on our behalf, is is here to address the next two items for the benefit of the board and the public.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, good evening, everyone. Just um, I think there's two items. I don't have the agenda right in front of me. The uh, Ventrac mower, uh, rough mower that we're requesting uh, purchase for um, uh, at once. We have one mower right now uh, that we use for contour mowing. Uh, it is uh, under duress. It's probably the best way I could put it. We spend a lot of money in repairs and uh, we're just kind of at that point, and we we do have it up and running at the moment. It's been up and down uh, this year and last year. And uh, so it's pretty critical at this point that we uh, replace this mower. It's um, it's kind of passed its useful life, that it gets a lot of hours on it, and uh, we're at a point of uh, uh, it's, we paid it off and uh, we're ready to, to get another piece. So we have a, we have that, and we'll keep this one as a backup, so we'll have something uh, in in the event we ever need a backup.
So can we get a motion? Because I I know that the supervisor formerly of mine is going to have some questions.
I move that we approve the purchase of a Ventrac tractor K N, model forty five twenty Z Kubota with contour mower deck M eighteen forty in the amount of thirty nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any discussion from the board?
We're all absolutely. Um, where does this fall in the twenty, just remind, the twenty twenty three budget and what's, how's it being paid for?
Yeah, so um, the item is not specifically budgeted at this point. Um, though Mike probably can speak about performance over the course of twenty twenty three. It would be coming out of the golf fund and and the excess revenue that the golf fund has realized, but perhaps you can provide a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Uh, I I think it's, there's, there was two options. Obviously, we could lease it because the other lease just expired. Our current lease budget's eighty eight thousand dollars for equipment. We're going to spend about fifty five thousand this year. We have another lease package falling off in October, so by twenty twenty four, we're almost uh, thirty thousand, it's almost half, about forty four thousand dollars, I believe. So there's some, not even put a dent in in that, uh, but we did recommend purchasing just because we can get it at once and it's available. And our current position right now, we're about two hundred and eight thousand ahead of net operating income through July. So we felt like it just made sense at this point, maybe to make that purchase, save those other lease dollars. Going back to our leased equipment plan uh, over the years, it's, obviously we had a kind of a structured plan of purchases and lease of lease replacement on equipment. Um, and there's been kind of a gap in that for hmm, uh, about four or five years now. So we did pick up uh, the two greens mowers, which were were really important uh, back in twenty two. Uh, the other item that you're going to speak to today, that we're speaking to today are the fairway units, which are currently thirteen years old. So um, so we're kind of in a good place as far as dollars in the budget and um, where we stand with our lease uh, budget.
And I get related to, you mentioned long, long term, so the related to that, um, what's the expected? One, what's the warranty on these things? Uh, and then two, what's the expected life lifespan as we look for? As you were talking about future replacement and all?
These, these are pretty much five year uh, replacement plans, so we we normally look at, because they gets, it's usually one piece that's doing all the contour mowing for us. So they get a lot of work and a year like this, where it's been pretty damp now, last, last month and a half, uh, you know, they work a little overtime with with the damp grass, so. Um, but the new mower, the Ventrac, uh, we've used that product at at some of our other facilities, uh, getting some, we we've seen some good stuff with it, so we like that mower. Um, and uh, we think it it'll be a nice replacement because it also can be added attachments to that, so down the road if we need a blower or other pieces that we need, lot less expensive to buy the attachment for that unit than um, than buying a a a whole new piece.
And you know, the the next one I'm talking about is a fairway mower, um, or leasing fairway mower. The Ventrac is, what is that used for on the golf court fairways for, you know?
The Ventrac's contour rough mowing, so kind of around the bunkers, the greens, so all the slopes that are on the uh, on the property.
All right.
So we have larger rough mowers that kind of do the main passes, and this kind of handles all the, all the, you know, closely mowed areas around the uh, around the bunkers and rough.
Okay, and there's a different mower forever. Sounds like there's a more for free interest.
It's about, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
No questions?
The only thing I'll add, um, Mike, and you know, I'm outside my comfort zone, but we've recently learned that when stuff loses past its life expectancy, we have somebody who likes to auction them.
Yes.
Don't hold on to the other one until it's useless.
Yeah, the the stuff that is useless, and Derek and I actually spoke uh, about that the other day. So I have our mechanic putting together a list of some things that have been kind of um, you know, sitting on the sidelines at this point, so we're going to try to get rid of that and and hopefully recover some of those, that money, uh, so we could put that towards this mower.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any public comment? With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Now onto the fairway mowers.
The fairway mowers, as I mentioned, uh, we're kind of at that place. This was a uh, I think initially we were talking about replacing these in twenty twenty. Um, uh, so we kind of extended that, obviously, with uh, with the budget and things. So we, we're at a point now, it's me again, getting kind of critical. We're putting a lot of dollars into these pieces. This is our, you know, greens, tees, fairways, that's your, your most important area. So, you know, quality of cut there is is critical. Uh, so these three pieces, uh, again, thirteen year old pieces, uh, we've, we've tested, uh, there's a couple of other models of the same mower. We've tested those. And uh, this is the product that we think's the best. Obviously, CoStar pricing uh, is in effect on these and covered through December of this year to make the order. Uh, however, the dating, right now, the shipping is so far out that we're asking you to make it early because we wouldn't have them for the season next year if we don't do it now. So um, request that we uh, we can make that, uh, we don't need to purchase those now, or just it's Or just that the request is to allow us to place the order so that we can have those for the twenty twenty-four budget. And it'll be more than enough in the eighty eight thousand dollar budget we've been using to cover the new leases.
How many units are you talking?
Three.
And what are the price?
It's two for all three, two oh.
Two nine.
So a two nine.
Two nine seven.
Yeah.
Is there?
So that's, I'll make a motion.
Anyone want, is that still moved? So there's a second?
I would second.
I don't know either, but.
So moved?
Motion by James, seconded by John. Any discussion from the board?
And again, these are going to be leased.
Yes.
These aren't purchases.
Correct.
That's the better approach.
Leases. Yeah, we, we look at the dollar buyouts.
And again, the same thing with the existing mowers. Are you going to look to?
Those we'd like to trade or, or put on muni bid. Probably do better on muni bid on those actually than trying to trade them.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a little bit of a market for that, that stuff right now.
Yeah, I was going to say three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Sure, we could get a better.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
That eighty-six Ford Taurus. That.
Correct.
I might have had a sunroof. So with these, you're thinking of leasing, what's the imputed rate that you're getting when you've talked to people for the leasing?
You know, we did not, I did not go because of them being so far out on the, you know, where, where we're going to be next year. And generally we would do that by bid as well and, and get, get the best rate for this.
So is your intent then that you would bid out the financing with banks in the area?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll get, we'll get financing from the, the, from Toro provides financing. So we'll get their number and then I would imagine it would make sense to bid it out. We generally do better locally.
I would go most certain. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think what Mike's primary purpose this evening on this issue, again, recognizing that the lease terms are not before you. Is just to get some general consensus on the ability to issue a notice of intent to start the procurement process. And then we would come back with the specifics as it relates to both the Toro proposal as well as some comparative pricing proposals as it relates to the lease. But generally speaking, as Mike has indicated, there's, there's leases that are falling off that are, I'll, I'll say operating expenses of the golf course. That he has the ability and the capacity financially within the existing budget to, to accommodate.
You don't need a motion, you just need general agreement.
Consensus? I, I think that's fine at this point. Again, you, you're not, there's no proposal per se. Mike, again, just with the lead time on these, just needs to start those conversations and wants to make sure that we're proceeding in general, general, generally consistent with what the board's, you know, wishes are related. So I will draw my motion in.
Would you just be a consensus to direct Mr. Tar to follow through with the?
So moved?
We need a motion. Unless somebody disagrees, it sounds like.
I'm sorry. I thought we needed to do that. I'm rusty, folks. I'm rusty to get the conversation going. So I think you have consensus of the board to move forward. Okay. Another question. Yes, sir.
Related, sort of related question, just because it's the long, it's generally a long procurement process. The, without getting into too many details, I'm just trying to remember. The art, art contract, township and spirit, is that a defined term of years or months or whatever it may be? That we have to look at again anytime soon?
There is a term on it, right? There, there's, I, I think. No, no, no. There is a, there isn't, there's like a, almost like an, there's a, there's a, there's almost like an automatic renewal provision.
Automatic renewal. I don't have.
Correct. So I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Why don't we, that's a great question.
Two, five-year renewals on my correct microphone.
Yeah, it was two threes with the auto renewals on the.
Yeah, I, I can look at that. As far as timeframe and notice and all that. Yeah, yeah.
The last time we looked at this.
Yeah, the third, the second of the three years renewed auto last year, I believe. So we're, got two more years on the, on the auto.
I know, I know I did look at this when I came.
Yeah, we talked about.
We were, we were having a discussion about this and, and we, the action wasn't taken to not trigger the additional auto renewal period. So we're still like in the beginning of that auto renewal period. But a, a, as Mike said, I think it's two, two years remaining out of the, out of the three.
So you have the approval of the board to move forward with that. I would say it's a good segue because we're about to start talking about the budget and you're hearing some of the questions going to be asked about the budget. You know that I'm going to ask you about the pollinators I keep asking you about, but that'll be coming. And I would, I wish I could do your voice, John, but I can't. Had a lovely meal there Friday night. I think it's a secret gem. I can't say it's four star service, but there was a nice new staff. We really enjoyed ourselves. People should go. I needed the golf course. It's very nice.
Great, great. The, the best view in town, that's for sure.
It is the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
So the next item, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief. I distributed to the board sort of a proposed twenty twenty-four budget calendar. With, you know, various sort of dates and, and deliverables and milestones. I guess the, the two things of, two, two dates of note for purposes of the board scheduling. Are the proposed sort of workshops. There's, there's two that are proposed. The twenty-fifth of October and the eighth of November. So if you could just look at your schedules and, and don't expect an answer now. But if you can look to see if that's generally, generally works for you. For purposes of, of reviewing the draft budget. Again, our, our goal is to get you something by October the twentieth and then have those two sessions. Do a presentation of the preliminary budget on the, on the fifteenth of November. And then authorize to make it available. It's required to be available for public inspection for a twenty twenty-day period. And then look at potential adoption at your, your December sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. You do have a second meeting in December in the event that that was necessary. So this schedule as proposed does provide some flexibility for the board and the township as, as we're going through the, the, the process.
Just for clarification, the, the workshops that you have here in the weeks of the twenty-fifth and, October twenty-fifth and November eighth. I'm, I'm assuming those are public sessions.
Those would be public sessions. Yes, they would be required to be advertised. Yes.
Okay, sure.
So again, if you, if you could just look at your respective schedules and, and if you have any feedback on, on those two dates in particular. You know, at some point we'll have to schedule or advertise the, the, those meeting dates.
See there.
Thank you.
And that gives us to the solicitor.
Yes, briefly, an executive session started tonight at six thirty PM. All board members are present along with Chief Kaluzi, Mr. Kratzler, myself. The items discussed involve litigation, informational and real estate in the meeting. The executive session included just before this meeting started. Next, zoning hearing board, just one thing I want to note, Jim. Kind of to follow up last time when we discussed this, the board has requested that on, if we can modify the zoning hearing board applications with respect to specifically to impervious surface ratio calculations. That not only is the table to be provided, then to show how they can make those changes, but also. For the applicants to affirmatively present some type of information. Many do, but they're not required to. They, the board wants some type of required presentation in their application that shows that they are attempting some type of stormwater mitigation. To bring the impervious surface ratio from the amount that's going to be created by the new application. Back to the acceptable, I guess, the limit that's under the, the applicable ordinance. I think I'm stating that correctly.
Right. And we are revising our.
Okay.
To have that on there going forward.
Right. Just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. And if anybody says that they don't know that before they get the form, we've talked about tonight. So.
Yeah. And, and I would just add, I think. In, in, with respect to being on the form and being online on the form, that it can't be submitted until that portion's filled out kind of thing. If that makes sense.
Well, it won't be, it won't be accepted.
It won't be accepted until it's done. Yeah.
Okay. As far as the three items that are on the, before the board tonight, first appeal number Z dash twenty-three twenty twenty-five. Steve Bone for the property located at thirteen thirty-three Revere Road. Tax parcel two zero dash zero five eight dash zero six nine. Applicant requested variance from township zoning orders two hundred dash twenty-two for rear yard setback. The forty-four feet, six inches for fifty feet is otherwise required. Also from township zoning orders two hundred dash twenty-three capital B, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing twenty-one point six percent. To twenty-four point four percent where eighteen percent is the liable amount in order to construct a four hundred and seventy-five square foot addition. In this case, the applicant has submitted affirmatively a stormwater mitigation plan. I would recommend deferral on that one unless there's a contrary sentiment. Hearing none under appeal B. Z dash twenty-three twenty twenty-six, Danielle Hennick for the property located at fifteen thirty-six Edgewood Road. Tax parcel two zero dash zero two one dash zero one nine. Applicant requests a variance from the township zoning ordinance two hundred dash sixty-nine point capital A fourteen small A. In order to construct a pole barn with a maximum height of seventeen feet or fifteen feet is allowable. In addition to placing the pole barn knot in the fourth of the lot furthest from the road. The no impervious surface issues implicated here, given the size of lot and also the, the relatively small increase in height. We recommend deferral unless the supervisors have a contrary sentiment. Hearing none. Finally, appeal number C, Z's dash twenty-three twenty twenty-seven. Richard Bronya for the property located at nine oh one Sensor Road. Tax parcel two zero dash zero three seven dash one one five. Applicant requests a variance from township zoning orders two hundred dash sixty-nine point capital A fourteen small A. In order to construct a shed that is placed sixteen inches from the side yard and four feet from the rear yard where ten feet is required. And township zoning orders two hundred dash twenty-three capital B, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing twenty point three percent. To twenty point nine percent where eighteen percent is a liable amount. In this particular case, there was no affirmative stormwater mitigation. Plan submitted. We'd recommend participation in this particular case. So there would be a vote required for that.
So moved?
Second.
Any comment from the board?
Okay, cool.
Nope.
Any public comment? With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
And that is all, all I have for my report. Thank you.
Okay. So community development?
Mr. Majewski, I don't, I don't know if you want to present on the next two items regarding certificates of appropriateness.
I was going to make a mic joke.
So you have before you a certificate of appropriateness for seven thirty-two Stony Hill Road. Building number three for Penn Valley Community Bank for signs and painting. They're just changing some of the color scheme of their doors, awnings and signs from a white-ish color to a dark blue color. And that was recommended by Harb for approval.
To make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for seven thirty-two Stony Hill Road, building number three, Penn Valley Community Bank Signs and Painting.
Second.
A motion from Supervisor Grignere, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any comment from the board?
Good question. If one has a business account at Penn Community Bank. Would it be best to abstain?
I don't, unless there's a community value you get from this, I wouldn't think, you don't have to. It's up to you. I mean, a, as a strictly legal matter, the answer would be no.
Okay, cool.
Any other comment? Any public comment? With that, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
We also have another certificate of appropriateness for approval by the Board of Supervisors. For sixteen forty-eight Yardley Langhorn Road. It's milestone behavioral health. They are replacing the sign in front of the property. And it was recommended by Harb for approval.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for sixteen forty-eight Yardley Langhorn Road Milestone Behavioral Health Sign.
Second then.
Motion made by James, seconded by John. Any comment?
Any question? Could, what we were given is sort of, I would say was a sketch versus the other one we just looked at had nice renderings. Do we know what, what, is it going to be a white sign or with white wood posts?
I believe that is the color scheme.
That is the color scheme. Okay.
Yes. And this was, this went to Harb over the course of two meetings.
They really put them through their paces on the sign.
Yeah, well, the first time they had some issues to address and they did that.
And Harb was okay with everything by the end of it?
Yes.
So it's a white sign with black. Writing and a little yellow center of a daisy. That was, that's what you're talking about? Just for those who are wondering what we're talking about. Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? That will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Supervisors report, oh, look, I'm first, I actually have nothing to add other than my continued plea that people follow along with what's going on at ADHOP. We expect that their report with recommendations will be before the board soon. But it's important that people have the opportunity to be heard and I, I hope you are using that opportunity to speak up. John?
Yes. So first off with the disability advisory board, there are two openings. And I urge you, if you're interested in accessibility issues and disability issues in general, to apply. And the disability advisory board does some tremendous work in terms of reviewing projects for accessibility. And they help generally with issues for those in the community. And you don't necessarily have to have a, a disability if you do, in fact. Do that, that's wonderful. And we've had folks with all kinds of different disabilities. But it's important to, for us to get community engagement as well. If you're not sure that you want to join the disability advisory board and my pitch isn't working for you. On community day, they'll be there with a booth and you'll be able to meet with some of the folks there. And not only those folks, but also the Bucks County SIL or Center for Independent Living will be there as well. And those are folks that you can talk to and learn more about what the disability advisory board does. I know I don't want to go too far. One last thing, I didn't, I wanted to say thank you for the fine presentation on the work that's been done in Slate Hill for the Historical Commission. I'm excited to see the stuff that's been coming. Chief was just telling me we'll be soon reviewing. The scans to see what we've got going there. So that's a good one. And that's all I have for report.
Thank you, James.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Dan. And Dan, if you would include planning?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll start with planning then. The planning commission met this, this week. Two items were on the agenda. One was a review of the site plan for the point. So folks that would refer to the Ishmael House and the Danny Quill House. There was no recommendations made at, at the planning commission meeting. There are, there were several comments with respect to tweaks to the plan as, as I would refer to them. So it's very likely that. We'll have to get an extension in terms of the review. And it would be more than likely that we'd see it probably late September, early October in front of this board. But more to come as, as they do that. Let's see, EAC met. I was able to attend that when I was out of town. Turner Mercy Citizens Airport Review Board also met. I was at that one, discussed various topics. And lastly, as part of the EAC. I think we, we kind of skipped over something that the manager could have, could have, could have announced, but.
Sure, ha, ha, happy to. So as the board is aware, we went through a process. It's through, it's a certification program through Sustainable Pennsylvania. It's a program that a couple, it might've been last meeting or the meeting before you had passed a resolution authorizing our participation in. We've gone through the process. We've achieved bronze certification. Again, the program sort of evaluates communities organizational sustainability, environmental sustainability, financial sustainability. And just sort of evaluates the organization from a best practice standpoint. And so we received word this week. There, one of the benefits of the program is, as I indicated in the email. Provides us with sort of a framework of, of best practices to consider as we move forward. And so while we went through that initial certification, there's opportunities for improvement. And where it makes sense for this community, we'll, we'll, we'll look towards continuing to use that, that framework as part of. how we're measuring performance and how we're evaluating ourselves and and ultimately allocating resources. So again, thank you to the EAC. Thank you to the boards that have been involved that have initiated these efforts in the past that enabled us to meet those respective requirements and like to again publicly thank both Jim Majewski and Dan McCleone, who in the office sort of took us through the through the process. So so thank you for making mentioning of that.
I'm super proud of this. I've been looking after this since I was on the EAC six, seven years ago. And bronze is nice. As someone who loves the Olympics, I always love going for going for gold. In this case, it's more like a credit card. You go for platinum over gold, I guess, but anyway, we can improve. I'm sure we'd be happy to see what we can do to get those additional certifications. But nice job, Jim and Dan, for for quarterbacking this through the process and Dave for getting it done.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Agenda item number sixteen, other business. Hearing none. Agenda item number seventeen, appointments or reappointments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make the following reappointments to boards and commissions. If it would please the Chair, I could do all four at once.
Wonderful.
I'd like to move that we reappoint Alan Dresser to the Environmental Advisor Council. I'd like to move that we appoint Mr. James Bray to the Environmental Advisor Council, Mr. Adrian Costello to the Planning Commission, and Mr. Anthony Bush to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Grignier. Any comment from the board?
Briefly, I've worked with all four of them very closely over the years as liaison. I think they're all great volunteers and I'm glad that they've decided to continue their volunteerism with the town. They're, but they're all very, very great assets to us.
Anyone else? Any public comment? That call the question. All those in favor, signify by raising their hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And we are back to public comment. If there's any other public comment in the room or online? Any public comment online? No. Okay, then with that.
There's no public comment online.
Thank you. There being no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.